I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for Monday, July 8th. If you could all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, for the United States of America, and to the Constitution, stand one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
White.
Here.
You have a form.
All right, Jamie, thank you. We'll start with Mayor's comments tonight. I just want to say what an incredible 4th of July weekend we had. It was so busy in our town. I just can't thank April Gundy enough, who's in charge of that fantastic parade that we had. Her organization to get that all together and get volunteers to make up that parade. All the people who decided to be a part of it and participate, the floats, the gorgeous classic cars, the Taylor Swift 2024 Brigade was hilarious. It really was amazing. And then all of the family-friendly events that went on at Coughlin Park as well. It really was some small-town tourist-town fun, and it was incredible. Also amazing, thanks to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Lisa Mize, and all your work to put together that 5th of July fireworks display. It made for an incredible long weekend. Honestly, lots of people commenting on what a gorgeous display it was. We just love to hear that, and we love hearing the praise of our Convention and Visitors Bureau doing such a wonderful job putting that together. Also, an insanely busy, long weekend for everyone who worked in town, all of our businesses. I'm sure you read the article that was on WWMT that was talking about how a lot of people were saying it might have been the busiest they've ever seen Sagatuck. So please, thank your local shop owners, thank your local restaurants, and anybody who worked in our restaurants this weekend, and DPW for keeping everything clean and pristine and looking fantastic for everyone who decided that they wanted to spend their 4th of July with us here in Sagatuck. I could go negative tonight. I've seen and heard enough of that already. It's just not who I am. But I will continue to use my voice and my influence to promote this town the way I have for the last 20 years of living here and visiting here. I will continue to promote it because it is the most fantastic town, and I'm so proud to live here and to be a full-time resident. So I will leave it at that and move on to our city manager's comments. Ryan?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any particular comments. I was going to also thank the CVB, so I'll echo your comments on that, our Department of Public Works staff. I commented, we had a lot of folks in town, had a lot of things to keep up on, but they did a fantastic job as well. Our well-beached team did a fantastic job. Thank you to the Fire Department, our public safety personnel who, you know, worked this weekend and took their time to help keep a, you know, safe event. And I have some other comments during the manager's report highlight, but I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any agenda changes, additions, or deletions?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an addition to add Alison Furman as a guest speaker. She is the Legislative Director of Michigan's 38th District and is here just to give us an update on the budget.
So you'd like to add it as the guest speaker?
As a guest speaker.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right. All right, at that, we will go ahead and introduce our guest speaker.
Hello, my name is Alison Furman. I am the Legislative Director for Representative Joey Andrews, and I was just stopping by to give a short legislative and budget update this evening. So this year's budget not only invests over $100 million in new revenue for cities, villages, townships, and counties, but it also sets the framework for the implementation of a trust fund. This results in approximately $140 million increase in direct resources to local government, or a 25% increase in overall funding. And so to break this down a little bit further, there's going to be $75 million to establish a public safety trust fund to provide cities, villages, townships with additional resources for police services and support for community violence intervention. And then there's going to be another $75 million in new revenue sharing, in a new revenue-sharing trust fund to continue support for all cities, villages, and townships and counties across the state. And then in terms of in-district investments that we were able to secure, one that we were really excited about was $1.3 million for Douglas for their lead line replacements. We were really excited to see that. And then there's a $150 million appropriation to the Palisades Nuclear Plant to reopen the facility, which would protect 600 high-paying jobs and create about an additional 1,100 jobs throughout the community. And then we are still working on our short-term rental legislation. It's still in negotiation, but we're really hoping to see it move in the fall. Any questions from anyone?
All right. Thank you so much for being here, and thanks for the update. We appreciate it. All right, we are on to guest speaker, or excuse me, on public comment on agenda items only. Go ahead and give us your name and where you live.
Yep, thank you, Glenna DeYoung, Sagatuck resident, speaking on Agenda Item 17E, petition for a pause on the airport property. At the city council meeting on June 10th, my friend, Chris Peterson, made the public comment, made this public comment about the airport property. I do not support a conservation easement without any measurable input from voters. You need to get our opinion on items. This would be called due diligence. One way to do this is a survey, which you did not do. Why doesn't the ODC do a public meeting? They are superb. We have had great relationships with them. Better yet, have them hike the property so they can see how beautiful it is. The good news, Chris, is that city council, along with support of Parks and Public Works, has been conducting due diligence on this property for close to two years. It has been on every PPW agenda for every month for a year. I'm glad that Chris thinks so highly of ODC, and everyone will be pleased to know that at PPW's recommendation, they were hired by the city to do data collection in the form of an ecological evaluation, ending in a 20-page report, and a sustainability evaluation, ending in a six-page report. They followed up with a public forum in which all citizens were invited to gather for public input. The SOAR analysis was conducted by David Nitre of ODC and is a much more robust gathering tool than a survey. Not paying attention as a citizen is not a valid excuse for attacking council members for things they are accused of not doing, when in fact, they have done a wonderful job collecting data and citizen input. Chris and her group always call for fiscal responsibility. I agree with them. However, it would be highly fiscally irresponsible to pay more money for a survey when a plethora of data has already been collected, including a robust process for citizen input. My co-chair, Kelly, and I have spent hundreds of volunteer hours for the city, including the playground build-out and the airport property, and securing a donation for $160,000. Normal communities would be thankful for this work, not ours. A small group of negative players spread misinformation and certainly are not being transparent themselves. Who circulated the petition to pause? They weren't signed. Who is sending postcards filled with misinformation? If they stand by these things, then come out publicly, folks, who are always calling for transparency. The petition made my heart sink. I met with several individuals who signed it. All said they signed because they were asked by neighbors. Two told me they were misinformed when asked to sign it. They thought the city was selling the property, and the signers were asking for a pause to discuss retaining the property. Wow. Two others said they signed, but they really didn't understand what it was. All totally agreed with to support hiking trails in the conservation easement once the facts were explained to them. Folks, we can do better as a community. Join those doing positive things and get off the "I oppose everything" bandwagon. Just let's show some appreciation for our volunteers, or the city will have none left. City Council, thank you for your votes to proceed with the airport property enhancements, and please continue on. Thank you.
Kelly Roach, 413 Hoffman Street, and serve on the Parks and Public Works Committee. I want to thank council for all their hard work thus far in making the important decisions to make Sagatuck a wonderful place to raise a family. In light of the misinformation being circulated about the airport property, I'd like to again share the tremendous amount of work and process followed for this project thus far. The airport property has been listed in our five-year Parks Plan. It's a park asset since 2002. That's over two decades of council leadership listing this as such. Yes, citizens have never had access. I joined PPW two years ago with the shared goal of changing that. This project has been on every PPW agenda, as we did our due diligence to use that property at its highest value. As City Manager Cummins has very nicely laid out many times now, this process included a Phase 1 environmental, an ecological evaluation from Outdoor Discovery Center, sustainability evaluation, trail map overview, an in-person ODC-led SOAR analysis to gather public feedback on how citizens would like to see the property used, public forum, and is available to the public via Zoom. Not one attendee suggested sale of the property. Evaluating legal liability and ADA requirements, zoning inquiries, and alignment with our DPW staff. When potential donors stepped forward in the fall of 2023, a multitude of projects were prepared with them, and they chose the airport property to give a generous endowment of $160,000 to cover all costs to open that as a park. This includes signage, trails, parking, invasive and habitat management, and conservation. The PPW committee unanimously voted to legitimize existing trails. Council voted this forward 6 to 1. The spread of misinformation over the conservation easement, I find performative. It stems from the same small group of malcontents looking to tear things down. The conservation easement has not been decided. The city is getting further guidance from ODC's experts in this area to surmise what part of the property could and should be placed under conservation. Then this will come back to council for vote, and it leaves room for deciding size and best uses for the rest of the parcel. To be publicly pushing an incorrect narrative before allowing the city to gather these facts is just premature political nonsense. I applaud council for having the vision to protect this incredible public asset. You are creating a legacy for all who live here. And for all the investors in the room tonight, remember, nature is truly what drives our tourist economy here. Nature. The renters don't show up for pretty roads and street lighting. If anyone here is interested in learning more about what truly is going on with the airport property and wants to see this exceptional place, I'm happy to connect always. Thank you for your time, and thank you, council.
Thanks, Kelly.
Marcia Casper, Sagatuck Township resident, speaking on Agenda Item 17E, petition for a pause airport property. On October 20th, 2023, I attended a SOAR analysis, strengths, opportunities, aspirations, results, conducted by the Outdoor Discovery Center to gather public comment about future plans for the former airport property. After seeing public notices of the meeting, I attended to provide my input. I spent many years of my working career conducting analyses such as these while working on change management projects. Therefore, I was as interested in seeing the process of data gathering as I was in participating in a public forum for a city-owned property of such natural beauty. David Nitre did a masterful job of conducting the analysis, engaging participants, and gathering and sorting and identifying themes. The city could not have hired a more skilled facilitator. I am confident in their strategic analyses of the airport property, which included an ecological evaluation, sustainability evaluation, and this SOAR analysis. Money well-spent by this council to gather data and citizen input. The top strength identified was the natural state of the park, the existing trees and the past and present value to humans as a carbon sink and to organisms as a habitat. The top opportunity was creating connectivity within the trails and community for the purpose of low-impact recreational use. The full report can be viewed on the city website. Of note, not one participant mentioned selling the property for development or for anything else. Not even my former colleague, Dan Fox, who I served on planning commission and for several years and who attended the meeting. I noted that there is a significant monetary value of keeping the compost and yard waste drop-off active here. Estimates are that if it saves the city over $200,000 each year versus hauling the material elsewhere. I'm very proud of the work my wife, Glenna, her co-chair, Kelly, and others like John and Chris, who have worked countless volunteer hours to make this asset even better for Sagatuck and the tri-community current and future residents and visitors. They should be commended rather than attacked for organizing, sound data collection, gathering citizen input, and even finding a donor to fund the full bill to make the recommended outcomes come to fruition. On a historical note, Teddy Roosevelt created the first five national parks during his presidency between 1901 and 1909. He received pushback from many groups, but he had the vision to preserve our national treasures for future generations. Now, while creating trails and presenting some of the air, and preserving some of the airport property is far from the scale of national parks, it is our responsibility to preserve this local treasure for future generations. Thank you, City Council, for your overwhelming vote to proceed with hiring ODC. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Clark. I live on 63rd Street in Sagatuck Township. I'm active in Riverwood Council, and I organize the Three Hour Hill Hiking Club. Some of you are familiar with those things. I'd like to comment on Agenda Item 17E, the petition for a pause on the airport property. I have actually read the airport property proposal that the city council approved on May 13th, and I'd like to clear up some misconceptions that members of the public seem to have. Number one, the decision was not rushed, as my friends have mentioned. The PPW has been talking about this since it first began in September 2022, and their proposal has been on the agenda of many council meetings since, before it was approved two months ago. Number two, the property is not being sold. I'm not sure how that got out there, and it's also not being handed over to the Outdoor Discovery Center. Number three, there is no current plan to protect the entire property. The city has not yet identified the specific areas that will be covered by the conservation easement. Number four, there are no strings attached to the anonymous donation that fully funds this proposal. Anybody tells you that, they're making it up. Number five, the city does not, does know the monetary value of the property and has known this all along. It's not a surprise. The truth is that there are many ways that not selling the property would generate value. Here are a few. Tourism. I did a little calculation. If the property draws an average of 15 visitors a day throughout the course of a year, and they spend, and it causes them to spend $10 apiece on food, lodging, whatever, over the course of 20 years, that would generate $1 million for the local economy. So that's generating income. Property values. New home buyers want to see walking and biking paths in the community that they're going to. Having more of this should raise property values and add to the tax base, thus increasing tax revenue. Businesses, parks and trails attract businesses because they beautify the area and offer an amenity that helps attract and retain workers. And there's a cost for attracting and retaining workers that would be reduced. Healthcare costs. Places like this encourage exercise and other outdoor activities that promote good health. The trees and plants that we will preserve here absorb pollutants in the air, reducing their impact on human hearts and lungs. Better health keeps workers on the job. That saves businesses money. Better health keeps labor costs down by keeping insurance costs down. To conclude, I have hiked this property often. The first time I saw that ravine, I was dumbstruck by the beauty. This has to be a park. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm watching the clock. Keith Chericks, 560 Sagatuck, Michigan. I'd like to address carbon capture, and this comes mostly from the ODC report. Healthy forests capture and store large quantities of CO2, carbon dioxide. The primary greenhouse gas associated with human-caused emissions and climate change. This relatively large tract forest and ravine system acts as a significant carbon sink that covers the tri-community. The tree cover alone stores over 5,000 metric tons of carbon, or the equivalent of approximately 20,000 metric tons of CO2. The U.S. Forest Service estimates that the yearly annual social cost, which is agricultural productivity, decline in human health and labor productivity, would be $51 per metric ton, or $1,020,000 per year. This particular existing canopy has the potential to remove 12,000 pounds of air pollution every year. For you health and science buffs, what's removed is carbon monoxide, which displaces oxygen in the bloodstream, depriving the heart, brain, and vital organs of oxygen. Next in the carbon capture list is nitrogen dioxide, and this was on the ODC report, which causes human harm to the respiratory system. Next up is the ozone layer, which respiratory affects such as asthma, headaches, and can exasperate lung diseases. Sulfur dioxide is the next one in line, which has more respiratory effects, particularly lung function through lung tracts. Then in the list after that is particulate matter, whether it's under 5mg or above 10. I might get my milligrams wrong. Dust, dirt, smoke, nitrates, soot, sulfates, metal, mold spores, to name a few. I won't bore you with the rest. These have increased risks of heart attacks and strokes, higher occurrences of asthma in children, COPD in adults, lower lung functions in children and teenagers, and a higher likelihood of lung cancer and diabetes, actually, from adult stage on. I think this is a slam dunk for the health and welfare of our community. Thank you.
I'm Chris Peterson from Sagatuck. I just want to make sure everybody was done. Okay. I did write a couple of times to, in fact, I spoke at the park committee. I wrote a letter to the mayor. I wrote a letter to Ryan Cummings. I wish we'd have had this kind of response when I first started asking questions. This is what people wanted to know. We didn't know how many acres. We didn't know who the donor was. We didn't know what the credentials were going to be. So this was what we wanted to know, and we still don't know. So I'm hoping that'll come out soon. I don't like the negativity. I didn't get negative. I just wanted to know some answers. I think anybody did. I'm hoping that these answers will come soon. And one of the things I wanted to say, I took a petition around. I talked to 28 different people, almost all of them from Sagatuck or worked here. Nobody knew anything about it. So I know sometimes, having been on the council before, you think you're doing it, and everybody knows about it. They don't, especially when Glenna said she had to explain to people what was going on. Well, if everybody knew about it, she shouldn't have had to explain it to people that already signed it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I'm John Vanderbeek, founder of Riverwood Council, Sagatuck resident. Yeah, I saw that petition. I was actually a little concerned, because when I talk to people, it seems like 90% of everybody just loves this effect that's happening in our community. What I mean by effect is, I love to see the synergy of Douglas and Sagatuck and Sagatuck Township working together to have connecting parks. I think what's beautiful about this that not everybody's mentioning is that we're going to be able to connect River Bluff. We're going to be able to connect it to Dog Park. We're going to be able to connect to Wade's Airport. It's going to be a really neat, connected thing, and I think you guys saw that. And so I called a few people on the petition that were friends of mine, and I found this sort of same thing that Glenna found, that most people just signed it because it was their buddy that asked them to. And they didn't, they actually kind of rescinded their commitment to signing it after I talked to them and explained a few things. It's hard to keep up with all this stuff. Not everybody is online watching. Not everybody's reading all this stuff. So you're going to have people that are surprised. But I think the work that you're doing is exactly what everybody wants. It's bringing the communities together, and there's always going to be people that are a little surprised. And I think, just keep it up, guys. I think you're doing a great job, all of you, and the volunteers, and all the passionate people that have been up here speaking so far. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, John.
Joe Leonati, 712 Alleghan. I think most of you who have been to the meetings know what my ambivalence toward the park is, one way or the other. But I wanted to maybe clarify things for future meetings. This is a piece of property owned by Sagatuck, the citizens of Sagatuck, the taxpayers of Sagatuck. It would be those same taxpayers that will be on the hook for any future improvements or maintenance, whatever cost. So if it is going to be borne by the citizens of Sagatuck, shouldn't we treat it the same way we do the beach? And that should be strictly for the benefit of the people for Sagatuck, a benefit of the taxpayers. I've heard a couple people talk. They live in the township. They live in, I couldn't care less. You're not the one paying taxes for this. It should be the taxpayers' point of view. And all these things about the nature preservation, they're all worthy. They're all worthy. But it's like, I would like clarifications as why we are going to open this up to the whole area when nobody's paying taxes but the people here. That's what I find objectionable. The park, one way or the other, whatever you want to do is fine. But I don't think it is fair to the citizens to be on the hook to pay for all of this. And also, I heard somebody say, well, there's no strings attached to this grant that was being offered. I've heard two or three different stories at the same meeting. One says yes. One of the councils said there's no strings attached. The other one said there is. So that should really be clarified. But again, I'm going to, the point, this is an asset of the city of Sagatuck and the taxpayers of Sagatuck. They are the ones that should benefit. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Hi, Sheila Dinman, 860 Simmenson. Came here to talk about short-term rentals and the impact that it's already had. Just because this discussion is even on the table, our home value has dropped over $200,000 in the last 45 days. And I want you to realize that this is a tourist town, and Mayor, you said it best at the very beginning. This is a tourist town. 4th of July was about tourists who come here. They have to have a place to stay. And so I'm hoping that the short-term rental moratorium goes away forever. I'm looking at selling my house, because at this point, our value has dropped below what we paid for the house. And so if short-term rentals go away, the town goes away. This is a tourist town, always has been, always will be. Thank you.
Catherine Simon, 428 Butler. I hate to tell you, like Pelosi, they count the votes here before they vote on anything, so it's a fait accompli. It's wonderful that all these folks came out, and I hope that you folks take note. But I too, and it's amazing to me how there's such a dichotomy. I talked to two of my Chicago friends that have homes up here over the weekend. None of them have heard from any of you. Not a thing. And I would have thought that Mr. Cummins would have notified all of the short-term rental owners. After all, you invited them into the group when you needed their input, but you asked them out of the group when you started making decisions. But we all take their money, don't we? All of their tax bills that everyone got this past week. When we had the park issue, at the end of it, Mr. Muncie pointed to the fact that we lost an opportunity to talk to the community about it, and asked all of you and all of us in the audience, let's have something at the high school. Let's put it up on a board and show everyone exactly what we're doing. You haven't told any of the owners of the short-term rentals what you're doing unless they subscribe to the commercial record or know somebody like me or a number of the realtors in the audience. So it's a communication problem. And here we are again, day after 4th of July, rushing, and big decision in the community, and we're going to just pass it. And the same thing will happen with the airport property. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Ethan Barty, Quaint Cottages, property manager, property owner in the township and in the city. I'm not going to go through all the stuff that I've said before about the tourist town. Everybody said all that. This council, I believe, has a fiduciary duty to the citizens of Sagatuck to make the right decision, and that decision is to vote no on the caps. Listen to the CVB. Have you read it? Have you looked at it? Look in your packet. Look tonight at the financial impact that it's going to have on the community. It will have an immediate impact on people who are going to try and sell their house in the next six months, 10 years, 15 years, depending on how long it takes for this cap to uncap. We haven't even, I walked into City Hall on Friday and asked, hey, we're halfway into the year. the year. I'm property manager. I want to know what issues we're having. How can I improve? Well, we don't have that. You have to look property by property. I'm like, you don't have the issues of what issues people are complaining about, and we're mid-July? Doesn't make any sense to me. The other thing that doesn't make sense is, why R1? I think R stands for residential. What about R2? I don't know. What about the whole town? If you're going to punish people, punish everyone. Maybe you're not including R2 because R2 has a lot of homeowners, and they don't allow rentals, so it's going to bring your number down. So I believe that there's only one vote, and it's no, and it's your fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Sagatuck so our businesses can thrive and our community can thrive. The one last thing I do want to say is, people have this notion that short-term rentals kill it. They make it. They make tons of money. There are some that do really well, but I would say that more than half are just doing it to supplement their income, to pay the taxes so that they can use their property. And you know what? They're kind enough to rent their property out when they're not here, so that tourists can come into the town, so that they can spend money in our community. But I can tell you that not every property owner who has an STR is killing it. There's people putting money with it just to have it, and we should be fortunate that they open their homes because we don't have the hotels and we don't have the spaces to have the celebrations that we had this weekend. And by the way, it's only a couple of months out of the year. The STRs are opening it up so people can come all year because we want people to come in the fall. September is my favorite month. In the winter, in the spring, not just the Fourth of July. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Williams, 241 Culver, 1050 Elizabeth Street. Tonight, I'm reminded that sometimes things are not as we envisioned. People often hold on to delusions, shaping their reality around what they hope for rather than what is. I'm not here to disparage the city, but to sound a wake-up call to certain elected officials. Take, for example, these two observations. What's the substantial difference between an STR guest and someone who stays in a property for 31-plus days in R1? Essentially, nothing. Look at the numbers. How many liquor licenses per capita are there in the city? Consider the social district, which includes private residences. Observe the playground. Public alcohol consumption is permitted there, even in the morning. In 2020, we opposed including the playground in the social district due to its negative appearance. However, the current mayor dismissed our concern, saying, oh, well, I guess that's not your jam. Note that 41% of students are not from Sagatuck Douglas. It's not a community-based school district. Step back and consider the optics. As a parent, would you want to live in this kind of tourism party-centric location? Or is this the community more suited for a second home than it has been for decades? I hope you vote no for the caps.
Thank you, Richard.
Sherry Tidaldi, North Street, longtime resident of the city of Sagatuck. I feel like I'm talking to some deaf ears, and that's very unfortunate. I was able to find an economic impact study for the city of Sagatuck. It was done by MLive, it was published by MLive, on 4/26/2019. We're much larger, hopefully, than we were then. In that study, they said that Sagatuck had an economic impact from tourism of $261.9 million. 98% of that income is related to tourism. That's nothing to sneeze at. We should be applauding and helping that business instead of trying to quash it. They say that 2,161 jobs with labor income of $98.7 million are related to this community. Federal state taxes, $38.7 million. Tourism includes $20 million to restaurants, $21.2 million to lodging. South Haven, by the way, was only at $154.9 million. So we are $1 million plus over that. Don't compare us to other communities who are not comparable. I'm asking you to use the report, the recommendations made by the Short-Term Rental Task Force. They're good recommendations, and please don't have those people's time and efforts be wasted. They made recommendations. Just because you don't like them doesn't mean you shouldn't implement them to help this community. What you do here tonight will impact this community for many years to come. I'm sure you don't want some of this as your legacy if this is your last year on the council. Thank you.
I'm Bobby Gont, and I live on the hill at 341 Main Street. In the spirit of full disclosure, two points. I'm a member of the Planning Commission and voted yes in favor of the STR cap proposal that's in front of the City Council this evening, including its provision to grandfather all existing short-term rental licenses and its PRE provision for full-time residents. Also, like many of you perhaps, I'm just coming off almost a week where fireworks were permitted in the city. They were wonderful, including its neighborhoods each day from June 29 through July 5, from 11:00 a.m. in the morning until 11:45 p.m. at night. Neighbors on the hill tell one another if we're going to be loudly celebrating anything, so there's no surprises and we can prepare. I know that it's unrealistic to expect that level of consideration from short-term rental property guests. So when 37% of all residences are short-term rentals, oftentimes accommodating more than one family, this is when density matters. And 37% density of STRs on our hill seems inconsistent with the tenants of the tri-community plan and our own city ordinance addressing low-density and residential character. Ordinance 154.026 R-1, Community Residential District, which is what the hill is considered to be, reads in part, "One, this district is designed to protect and promote low-density, single-family residential uses and development in the city. Two, the purpose of this district is to preserve the residential character of the district and to provide mechanisms for orderly development in undeveloped areas. Three, residential land use is the only use that will be permitted or encouraged in this district. And yes, short-term rentals are a permitted use in the context of the general provisions of low-density. In 2017, there were a total of 104 short-term rental citywide. Today, there are 278 short-term rental units, 167% increase in seven years. And of the total of the 278 today, there are 123 STRs on the hill. What these numbers mean is that 44.2% of all STRs in the city are on the hill. Furthermore, 37% of all residences on the hill are short-term rentals. It doesn't sound like low-density to me." Again, the ordinance states that the R1 district is designed to protect and promote low-density, single-family uses, and to preserve the residential character of the district. How does one reconcile low-density, single-family uses with 37% of all residences on the hill being a short-term rental, often accommodating more than one family? I respect and appreciate the challenge you face in this decision. However, as challenging as it is, you took an oath to uphold our regulations and enforce the city ordinances. I'm asking you to do just that, enforce this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening, Council Mayor Joe Clark, 419 Francis Street. I also am on the Planning Commission, voted in favor of instituting the recommended 20% It's hard to follow Bobby. But I would like to echo her comments, especially in regards to how our zoning has been structured in the spirit to promote the welfare of a thriving community by having residents who actually live here full-time and participate constructively in the growth of our town. And I just want to point out, I've said this before, it's a broken record.
If I could ask everyone in the audience just to try to be a little bit quiet, just because it's hard to hear. So, thank you.
Just to reiterate, if you believe the information that came in from the Short-Term Rental Task Force specific to the survey data, and you can hear it in the room, there's two camps. You have a majority of full-time residents who are trying to make Sagatuck a home want to see the cap put in place. And if you look underneath the numbers, it's very specific. Where we have density issues, where we have a lot of penetration of short-term rentals, the recommended percentages are coming down, and that's how the majority has settled in on the 20%. On the other hand, non-residents obviously do not want a cap. So we have a tough decision tonight. I wish I could make it for you. Alls I can say is, you know, a lot of work has gone into making the recommendation from the Planning Commission, or the 20%, or the reasons stated very well by Bobby, and I wish you well in making your decision tonight. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. I'm Paul Caris. I live on 241 Park Street. Lived here in Sagatuck for the last seven years. Been involved in the city since the '70s, when I went to college, and I see the city the way it's grown and everything, and I'm so very against the capping. Everyone I talks about full-time residents, well, we live on Park Street, and all winter, we're the only ones there. Nobody lives on Park. They're all gone to Chicago, they're all gone. So, they're gone. It's a ghost town there. So, you know, well, there are very few people there, probably 10% there. And I wonder really, what's the problem with the short-term rentals? Are they bad people? Are they criminals? What's wrong with these people? They're great people. We meet them all the time for dinner. We get great stories from them. They're wonderful people. They help, they're not, are they causing riots? Are they making a lot of noise? What are they doing? I live here. I have big parties at the house. I'm a full-time. I should be thrown out because I have huge parties at the house. People love them. They come here every year, they ask for more to do the parties again. So I really don't get what the problem is with it. You know, there's other problems that we should look at more than this. If there's a problem, if someone makes noise, they should have the police, because there's an ordinance for it, fine them. Say you have $100, whatever, it's fine. They can charge the tenant and pay them, fine. But just because something doesn't work, you can't get rid of that. It's just not right. It really isn't. It keeps the city thriving. It really makes the city healthy. You read about Sagatuck as one of the best cities in the country. Ogle Beach is rated number two. All that stuff's going to go away if we start mandating these laws. So anyway, that's all I have to say, but I really hope that it doesn't go through. Thank you.
I was going to keep my mouth shut tonight, but I'm sorry. This is invisible Jane Underwood, 130 Perrym. You know what? We need to have a cap, and we also need to have some enforcement. Just coming over here this evening, I counted eight garbage cans that are on Park Street. Now, I don't know why the garbage, they did a pickup. They do Monday morning pickup in Sagatuck on Park Street.
All right, all right, all right.
Yeah, I just, a feeling of community. There are people, I can remember.
If everyone could please keep it down so she can have her time, please. Thank you.
I thought InterCity High School. Do I have to take somebody out? You know what? I can remember when there was no one on Park Street across the river in the winter, but there are a number of us who live there year-round. Just driving down Park Street is dangerous. I wasn't going to mention this, but a visitor from Alexandria, Virginia, was walking on Park Street Saturday. She had to jump twice, and this is north on Park Street, before a car hit her. Her elbow hit a side-view mirror because the car came so close. I'm thinking, you know, there's a lot of issues that we need to talk about here, and I think we need to settle down and also remember, maybe your property value went down, but what about the person who wants to sell a house and they're surrounded by short-term rentals and nobody wants to buy it? Ooh, now that can hurt. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Greg Hour from 548 Hoffman. You know, I kind of find it a little ironic that I'm here talking to a city council and for the members that ran on a platform of Sagatuck Forward, when all we're doing is talking about moving backwards. This narrative began with traction parking issues, and then it was, well, we don't have a problem now, but we need to maintain our communities and try to attract younger families to move here. And then that narrative changed to, no, it's noise and capacity. Let's put noise and capacity at the forefront. But we have seen no substantial evidence or any facts presented to anyone that STRs are a real problem in our community. Today, the new narrative is, we have so much of a problem, we need to move our city backwards and revert back to, I heard, 2017. I'll be conservative and say two years in the levels of STRs two years ago. But let's set aside the emotion and focus on four undeniable data model highlights from the packet I provided to all of you. The first, the impact of an STR cap. Reducing our number from 158 to 100 homes risks losing a potential of $1.9 million in revenue to our businesses. The other revenue fact that will be lost is nearly $1.9 million in tax revenue, which directly goes to our services and our schools. Now let's talk about the economic ripple effect. An STR reduction that will affect our direct spending in town, but also the cascading impact on various sectors of our one-dimensional economy. The retail shops, the restaurants and staffs, the cleaners, the maintenance people, the property managers, and oh, yes, the local artisans that built this art coast, all causing further economic strain. Now let's talk about the second homeowner contributions in the narrative that we've heard in town. If you can't afford a house here without renting it, you don't belong here. Well, this ignores the significant contribution of second homeowners. And those who rent those properties on platforms like Airbnb, we pay higher taxes, we employ the services I just spoke of, we contribute more to the local economy with sales tax, occupancy tax collected from every single rental that is transacted on one of those platforms. Versus, a second homeowner who you all cherish and want to have here will only contribute to the non-homestead taxes. Finally, let's take some lessons from other cities that have a more diverse economic platform than we do. Traverse City, Grand Haven, all implemented similar restrictions and experienced economic downturns, business closures, and failed to achieve community balance. We're going to end this with our golden comparison of Charlevoix. We hear it all the time in Charlevoix. According to charlevoix.com and Bridge Michigan, current caps are causing economic strain, and City Council is considering an increase of an additional 40 STR homes, increasing that number to 120, which is 20 more than your proposal. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else in the audience?
Yep, I'm in the audience.
This is Kim Brewer. I live at 241 Park Street year-round. We bought our place in 2015. We also own 515 Park Street that we bought. We use it as a short-term rental. We do not make an income off this property. We do it because we love this town so much. We love all the activity. We want to share it with people. We love all the activity. We want to share it with people. We want to show them how beautiful our town is. We want them to come here and spend money at the places in this town that I love. I support the businesses here. You know, people that own businesses here, they know I support their businesses. I don't, I'm from Grand Rapids. I don't go back there and shop. I shop here. I eat here. I want people to enjoy it. And we have never had a complaint at our rental unit. And I just think that if there is a complaint, I know the people that lived there before, the police were called on them because they were noisy. And they were permanent residents, or they were residents. We're doing a rental there. I see no problems with it. You know, if we're talking problems with traffic on Park Street, well, do we limit how many people can go to Oval Beach then? Do we limit how many people can be on pontoon rentals that fly by and leave wakes and my boat's banging up against my dock? You know what? I love this town. I love everybody having fun. It's a short season. Just let the people enjoy our town. We're a tourist town. That's what we're made of. So I hope that you vote no on the cap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? How can I speak here? Hello?
We still have someone in the audience that wishes to speak.
I'll be quick. CJ Badrack, Planning Commission Sagatuck resident. I'm not going to talk about short-term rentals too long. I think all the points are clear. I think you should send it back to planning, listen to Steve, the chairman's numbers, or the numbers that are provided here. Let us get a real analysis done and give you a reason why a percentage, if there needs to be one. But I wanted to talk about the water tax. You know, there's no end date. I think it's great, willing to pay it. We should put some money aside for those things. But let's have an end date so that it's not forever. And in the future, it'll maybe 2040, since that's when it's all supposed to be done. Have that thing sunset so that that tax ends and doesn't continue forever and be spent on something else. Thanks.
Thanks, CJ. Anyone else? Go ahead and come up to the podium.
Severn Lowiki, 841 Holland Street. And I'm here to talk to you as a business owner. I own a little store in town, and I also own an Airbnb. So this issue of short-term rental affects me in both ways. And I guess I would like to start that we all agree that the town has issues, but we just don't agree how to fix the issue. And I don't think the cap is going to fix the issue. We live in post-COVID reality, which I don't think we want to agree. The prices of real estate increased 100%. So I just checked a second ago on Zillow, the cheapest house is $570,000. The mortgage on that will be over $3,000, almost $4,000. So the idea that a family, and the house is 1,100 square feet. So the idea that a family will move in into town and somehow make it their home is just not realistic. And that was the cheapest house. Another one was like $800,000. So the way I see it as the city to fix the issue is either to subsidize the new people to move in, we can either do it by allowing them not to pay taxes for so many years, or maybe subsidize their mortgage. I know we have some money on the side, maybe that will help. But I don't know if that's realistic. Another option would be to attract investors to build actual low-income housing. We have a huge property, the airport, which is the issue right now. But maybe part of that property could be used as affordable housing. Maybe we should put more effort into attracting somebody, and that would help us to actually have some people to be able to buy in, because it's just not realistic that whoever buys in, that won't be a second home. That will be a second home ownership. It will be somebody with the money, living full-time somewhere else, and having a house as a second home. And we know that those people, they don't spend as much money as the short-term rental people do. I think it's 50 to 100% difference in money spent. Another point I would like to make is that we don't know how many active Airbnbs we have. We know how many licenses we issued, but we don't know how many of those are actually being used. And there was a huge, huge increase in licenses in the last two years. And that's where the moratorium was proposed. I do believe that the moratorium pushed many people to apply just because they were afraid that they would be not able to rent. And we don't know if they use them as Airbnb. They have a license, they show us as Airbnb, but is it really Airbnb? You don't know. I mean, I don't think we knew. We do. So my suggestion would be if you really wanted the cap, I would cap it at the current level. I would make the license transferable. I believe City of South Heaven does that. You can transfer the license to the new buyer. In that way, we avoid the issue of people buying in and losing the value of the home. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the room? Okay. Still a few more. Thanks for your patience online.
Hi, I'm Tammy Kerr. I live in the township, but I also own homes in the city. I just want you to know that that is my $570,000 house on the hill. That is the cheapest one. But it really isn't. Now it's really a $475,000 house, because that's the offer I just got on it, knowing that this cap is going to go in place. So my seller, who doesn't live here, she moved to Florida, is getting mistreated by not being able to sell her house at the same price that everyone around her has sold at. And it's unfortunate, because it is only an 1,100 square foot house. It's too small for a family. But if all of you people that want caps, you have family members, bring them in. I have a house, 1,100 square feet. But there's no families coming to it. It's been on the market for six months. So I don't know what to do about it. But it can only be sold either as a rental or a second home. Thank you. I do not, I'm not for caps, just so you know. Thanks.
A little taller than Tammy. Mark Lachey, 345 Grand Street. I'm really disturbed, and I've said this at Plan Commission meetings, about how this has divided the town. And I really hope, I mean, there are people not talking to each other. There are people who, it's, I've never, I've been here since, I've been here, coming here since 82, and I've been here full-time 11 years, and I've never seen this. And I really do hope as initial thought that we're able to get past this one way or the other, and that we move on as a community. And I thought the July 4th weekend was great because it really did bring a lot of people together. And so, with that said, and in that vein, I prepared a list of items over, I'll say, the last six years or so, where a certain group of people in town consistently vote no, or push for no. For example, the gazebo in the park, going further back, the non-discrimination ordinance, painting rainbows, sidewalks, the waterfront redevelopment district, consistently the airport property, now short-term rentals. It's not all exactly the same people, but it seems like there's a fungible group of people who genuinely, when somebody says yes, they're prone to say no. And I find that equally unfortunate. The final thing I want to say, I've got a minute and a half, is I don't see him here tonight, but the attorney representing some property owners has consistently said threatened, and there's been threats on both sides. Threat of a ballot initiative, threat of a lawsuit. I don't think that we should be making public policy, public decisions based on threats either way. But the attorney has said that they're going to file a lawsuit based on denial of substantive due process, taking, and violation of the state statute for zoning. In December of 2023, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, with an opinion written by Judge John K. Bush, appointed by Donald J. Trump to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is right below the US Supreme Court and covers Michigan, in the case of Moskovich versus the City of New Buffalo, Michigan, ruled that a cap on short-term rentals is constitutional. So you can relax that if there is a lawsuit, it will fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else in the room?
Hello.
Hello. Lisa Mize, Executive Director of the Sagatuck Douglas Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've said, I've made my statements at the workshop, so I'm going to keep it very brief in the essence of time. The Sagatuck Douglas Area Convention and Visitors Bureau opposes proposed caps on short-term rentals due to their significant role in potentially undermining the local economy. The CBB supports an economic impact study to assist in future decisions around STRs. The CBB advocates and supports enforcing compliance with new STR regulations to maintain Sagatuck's status as a welcoming, world-class tourist destination. Personally, you guys, I'm going to add, I was born here. Many of you may not realize that. I don't live here. No, I live in Grand Rapids. But I was born here. I went to school at St. Peter's Catholic School until it closed down with Diana and Laura. And my dad taught school there. My grandmother started the library at St. Peter's School. They used to dance at the old pavilion. This area is rooted deep in my being. And I'm going to echo how Mark started, that it's very disappointing, and it saddens me greatly to see how this issue has really divided so many people. And I don't, I don't envy you at all in the decision ahead. You know where the CBB stands. Thank you for your service.
All right. Austin Marano, 717 Water Street. I did not plan on speaking today, but I felt like just to give another perspective and maybe lower the average median age in the room. So we're getting there. But yeah, so, yeah, I mean, this is great. It's a great civic turnout. It's lovely. But no, I'm a third-generation Sagatuckian. You know, my grandpa was a town doctor here for a while, and my wife and I, we just moved back. We were very intentional. You know, I went to Sagatuck High School, went to college, was in the Army for seven years, went to law school, and now we're back. And so, don't judge my wife either for what I'm saying. She's the new eye doctor in town. She's a much better person than me. So, but as far as when it comes to short-term rentals, I don't have the solution. And I don't think anyone really does. And I don't know if caps are it. It's tough because it's very arbitrary. It gets to that point. Personally, I think there could be some other ways to get after the problem. But I do think the longer we drag it out, that's one more house, one more home that gets grandfathered in and taken away from other opportunities going forward. So all I kind of want to bring in perspective is that there's younger people. We exist. We're locals. We're people that want to get back to this community. And thankfully, my wife and I have set ourselves up in a position to come back to this community. But I have friends who want to come back as well. And it's tough, especially when you are competing with buyers, or LLCs, or corporations who can finance their mortgages through STR rentals. And it's a tough thing. And I guess the other thing I want to get after is I have four sisters. One of them, she wants to stay in the community. And she's kind of just been pushed out in a sense because there is no area to get a long-term rental in this town. And I think that that's, you know, terrible. Back in the day, all above the storefronts, above the drugstore, those people who worked in this community. And I know, I agree 100%, like the tourists, that is the golden egg. Like, that is what makes this community what it is. But I don't think we can forget that the people of Sagatuck, the locals here, that's the goose that lays the golden egg. And Sagatuck has some nice geographic wonders, and it's kind of the same all up and down the lakeshore. And we got beaches, we have Lake Michigan, all that good stuff. But people come to Sagatuck for the people that made up this community. So I think we can't forget about them as we go through these decisions. I'm really grateful for all the work that you guys have been doing. And I think it's a really tough decision. I'll support you either way. I hate all the vitriol that's been on social media, but I respect the heck out of all you guys. I respect everybody in this room, and I'm happy to be a part of this community. But I just kind of want to give a different perspective. And I think whatever decision you make, I think will be the right one. I think we'll work through it together. And hopefully, we can just stay talking throughout the process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's go to online. I see a hand raised in the top corner. You will be unmuted here in one second. And I don't see your name listed, but you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Yes, you, pointing to yourself. I don't see your name, so go ahead. Introduce yourself and where you live. You're still muted, my friend.
Okay, trying again.
Okay, there we go. We hear you now.
Perfect. My name is Stephen Ross, resident of 186 Maple Street on the city side. And I have put up with, you know, the Blue Star Highway construction. My street, Maple Street, has turned, right there at Alleghanon the corner, has turned into, you know, absolute thoroughfare instead of Blue Star Highway, also that we could put in a roundabout at Alleghanon and Blue Star Highway. My tax payment right here is $15,356 for the summer portion of my home there. And I do use short-term rentals to help pay my property taxes of $15,000 for the summer portion. And your city treasurer quit on you two weeks ago because you guys are not thinking about the fact, here on the agenda tonight, you want a water increase for the conservation. You took your members out last week, over the past two weeks, to go look at the soil erosion. My property taxes are paying for these things to help with the city, to help with that new roundabout on Blue Star Highway that has taken you, it's over budget and been delayed. My property taxes of $18,000 this year on my $600,000 house that was built in 1852, this is ridiculous that you would think that somehow I can have $18,000 come out of the net without supplementing of short-term rentals. I was there for the fireworks. I weeded the house. I feel like short-term rentals sometimes actually have beautified their houses more than the actual residents have on Park and on the hill. I have flowers out. I have two American flags on my house. I helped beautify this town that I have loved. And when I, as a Wolverine, when I go to Ann Arbor on game day, I expect that there's going to be some parking issues around the big house. You guys expected that there would be a great turnout, such that you're running the new two buses that you can afford because of my property taxes, that you went to a cleaner emission bus to bring people over to the church diagonally across from my street, which is Alleghanon still closed down. We help bring people into our community, but you have this weird expectation because there are already city ordinances on the book, like with the noise problems or something, call for a noise violation. And we all make sure that nothing happens to our residents, or our people that are coming in for short-term. But we, that spice shop wouldn't exist without tourism, Hillwin's having two locations in town for my toasted coconut ice cream that I had on Saturday and Sunday. I couldn't even stay in my own house. But I came in and I was there, spending money in my town that I love with you guys so much. But as I look at tonight's agenda for the water conservation issue, you want to increase that? You want to vote on staff wage increases? The changing to the paid holiday adjustments? Where do you think that money comes from for Ryan Cummins's budget to run as city administrator for all of the city people that ran the extra buses and the extra shifts and stuff during 4th of July? Because we did swell, just like the big house does with Ann Arbor. And the restaurants that close down in the winter because you don't have people coming into town, I'm there. I'm there trying to eat and going to the grocery store. I feel like the produce was freshest at the grocery store this weekend because they actually bought green peppers, and they weren't like eight days old and stuff at the gosh darn grocery store. So I will tell you, we all benefit when we swell up at these high periods of time, and then it all relaxes down, just like on a Wolverine scheme.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments. Up next, Art Coast Properties with your hand raised.
Hi. My name is Joe Park of 96 East 20th Street in Holland, as well as I'm a small business owner in Sagatuck. My husband, Philip, and I own Art Coast Properties, a short-term rental management company, which services Sagatuck and the immediate surrounding areas. Our clients are the owners of many homes in the R1 district. And when they're out of town, we're managing both their homes and the short-term renters who share their homes. This decision will impact our business greatly, as well as the livelihoods and home values of our clients in the R1 district. I wanted to start by saying that I do at least somewhat understand the concerns of those in favor of the cap. I run my business year-round in Sagatuck, and I definitely agree that parking is difficult between June and August. I run my business year-round in Sagatuck, and I definitely agree that parking is difficult between June and August. Tables are difficult to find at restaurants. Shops are crowded with shoppers, and pedestrians are flooded in the streets. For this reason, I often find myself enjoying the town more outside of the busy season, something I'm sure a lot of us can relate to. That being said, all of the statements I just mentioned are good for the businesses in town, not just mine. Packed shops, restaurants without any open tables, full sidewalks, and full parking sounds to me like a lot of money coming into our town, both in the form of support for local businesses and in tax dollars. I'm happy to make an extra lap around town to find a parking spot when I know it means so much success for everyone in town and so much joy for those visiting it. Furthermore, to say this is a pause, or this won't affect anyone who currently has a certificate, is completely ignorant of how the real estate market works. It shocks me that anyone who owns a home in this town would want to cap on short-term rentals. All of your home values have skyrocketed in recent years, but the fact that this is even a topic of discussion gives hesitation to many potential homebuyers looking in the area. The actual implementation of a 20% cap would rock the home values in the R1 district. Furthermore, all of the other districts would likely suffer as well because if council were to vote in favor of the cap, it would create uncertainty for the entire town. The vocal minority of homeowners in the area who want this cap invent reasons why they want it that sound reasonable, or at least more reasonable than that they can't find parking or they can't get a reservation at Bodys. They say things like vacationers are loud at all times of night, which I can tell you from personal experience, they are not. In fact, many of the homes we manage have a system called NoiseAware, which tells us the exact decibel level inside and outside of the house. The vocal minorities say that there are empty houses on every street, but we all know that that isn't true. The empty houses will come when vacationers stop coming to Sagatuck and the property values plummet. The vacation rentals at the center of this hot-button issue, for most part, have managers like me who are reiterating the rules and coaching visitors to be respectful when they're enjoying their stay. Behavior issues are practically nonexistent. It's my opinion that both the Planning Commission and City Council are responsible for upholding the best interests of the community majority, and it's clear to me that short-term rentals are helping us all. Instead of having this argument, we should be planning new ideas like new parking and new restaurants.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Nancy Kimball.
Hi, Nancy Kimball, 550 Spear Street, living in the city of Sagatuck. I'm also on the Parks and Public Works Committee. And I just want to make two quick comments. You've all heard from me on, many times, on short-term rentals. So I'm going to start out also with the airport property. When the airport property topic was first introduced, my immediate response was, oh, please don't develop it. And that's because when my husband and I first started coming to Sagatuck, we were, we were residents of the city of Chicago. And we came here to get away from all the density and the suburban life. And when we got to Sagatuck, it was like a breath of fresh air. And as I've seen it develop in recent years, because it is such a lovely place and it does attract so many people, it, it, it worries me. It bothers me. It won't be the same. And obviously, things change. But we have an opportunity with this property to actually preserve what the OTC has said is very, very high-quality environment. And so I think that the council has acted responsibly in how they responded to PPW's recommendations. And I just want to go on record as saying I very much support the conservation easement and also understand that, that doesn't mean the whole property is, is being conserved. And I, I think that's something that's important for everyone to be aware of. And then just as far as the caps on the short-term rentals, I hear a lot about how the renters are, I'm, I'm very much in favor of caps. And that's because, as Holly Anderson has put so eloquently, it's, it's about density. It's about community. And we are losing our community, especially here on the Hill. And every house that goes up for sale, I hold my breath. There goes another one, and sure enough, it does. It goes short-term rental. And if you look at the studies about what makes people feel good and content and happy in their, in their communities, it is a sense of community. And I cannot have a sense of community with someone who changes every week at the house next door. Our neighborhood has been fortunate. We still have more actual residents than we have short-term renters. We have a gentleman who turned 90 years old. We have neighbors who are continuously looking after him. That doesn't happen with short-term renters. We've got to preserve the quality of this community. And so I feel passionately about it. You've heard it from me many times, and that's, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
All right, Nancy, thank you. Lou, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Lou Wessel. I'm at 346 Mary Street. I know everybody is very passionate about this issue of short-term rentals on both sides. I think one thing we can all agree on, all of us that can agree on, is this is a big deal. This will be a fundamental change to the town. It's taking away property rights. It'll affect values. And having said that, I don't, if I were sitting in your seat, I don't know which way I'd vote for, for or against. But I think that's my point. If ever there were an issue that really should be put to a direct vote of the citizens, I think it's this one. It affects everybody in the short term and long term. If this council votes and it passes by one vote or fails by one vote, it's not going to put the issue behind us. If anything, it might just escalate the vitriol. But I do think if it goes to a vote and it's decided that way, I, I for one will say, okay, that's what my neighbors have decided. I can live with that. And that's really the only point I wanted to make. And I don't think you'll be shirking your duty. You won't be, you know, passing the buck. I think you'll be recognizing just how big this issue is. And I hope you'll consider that. Thanks.
Thanks, Lou.
All right, Dick Wasken. Unmute yourself. Dick, if you can unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry about that. I always forget that. Yes, Dick Wasken, 6576 Hermit Road, Sagatuck, Michigan. I guess as I look at this, I feel we're a lot of people who've come together to talk about this, to discuss this, to make their points. But I look at the faces around the room, and I listen to what Scott Dean said last, last week, that everybody's minds are already made up. And that's so disappointing. It's like we're going to disregard the discussion. We're going to disregard people's opinions, people's studies. I mean, Greg went through a study because the city didn't. We don't have an economic impact study going. We are charging forward with a... I, I don't know whose iPhone Michelle is, but she needs to mute herself, please. Hello?
Okay, we're still in good shape. Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, um, and I was going to say that we are in a, in a place that a cap of 20% has been discussed by Planning Commission and put forward. It was a split decision. It is now before you. It's a split decision before you if what Scott said last week is true. It's going to be four to three. It seems to me that you're at a place, if you want to put a real end to this, a real looking at the issue, that you really have to do an economic impact study. If you disagree with Greg has said, Holly, you know, he directly asked you some questions in what he said, then get an independent study. If you go forward with this major change, which is going to affect the town for 10, 20, 30 years in the future, without having an economic impact study, somebody said last week, that's reckless. There is no need to rush this. There is no need to hurry. You can wait, put a pause on this, have the study done, and make an intelligent decision that is best for the town. I know of no council that would vote for a town that we're going to now set it back. We're going to make people less prosperous. We're going to make homes less valuable. It makes no sense for a council to do that. And the only bright spot I see this, if you vote for this tonight, is that there will be an election in November. And this four-to-three vote could change, and this could be reversed. And I just hope that that doesn't have to be the course you go tonight, that you will vote for a pause, that you will take a step back and really look at this issue fairly. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Thanks, Dick. All right, Michelle Chitwood. Michelle Chitwood, if you could unmute yourself. All right, Michelle, are you there? We're wa, we're waiting for you to unmute yourself if you wish to speak.
He's also on video down below next to Scott Sullivan.
Oh. All right, take your time if you need to unmute yourself. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip you real quick, and we're gonna move on to somebody else, but we will.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Perfect.
And I, I'm only going to take 20 seconds. I'm not going to take three minutes. I have owned property...
Michelle, if you could state your name and where you live.
I'm so sorry. Michelle Chitwood, 860 Simonsen Drive. I have owned properties in Sagatuck since 2010. And the only way we can do that is through STRs. And I guess I agree with the last person who spoke. I would like an economic feasibility study because we pay $24,000 a year in taxes and cannot afford this without STRs. And I don't want our property value to drop significantly because of this cap. And I guess what I would like to know is what the permanent residents of Sagatuck pay in taxes and what the non-residents pay in Sagatuck taxes. Thank you, and I appreciate all you are doing.
Thank you.
Joe.
All right. Moving on to Steve Ross. If you could unmute yourself, Steve.
I actually already spoke, and I just joined on my phone instead.
Okay.
Because my name wasn't...
All right, we'll move on then. Anyone else with your hand raised? Jamie, do you see anyone? All right, if there's no one else who wishes to speak, we will move on then to the item number nine, the consent agenda. It's on page three of your packet. And Ryan, if you want to go over anything that's in the consent agenda.
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor. Your consent agenda this evening is approval of your regular meeting minutes from your meeting on June 24th of 2024. Historic District Commission appointment, Nico Leo resigned from the Historic District Commission. And Mayor you and I and Chair Straker interviewed Megan Lampin, and you're recommending her for appointments to the Historic District Commission. We had a second applicant that dropped out just before the interviews. And then to reappoint Richard Bond to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Kelly Roche to the Parks and Public Works Committee.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, oh, go ahead. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? It's a roll call vote. If we could take the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
I want to say yes, and thank you to those that serve our community on the boards and commissions.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to staff reports, boards, commissions, and committees, page 13. Onto the city manager report, item A1.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple highlights from my report. The first being that we had a workshop maybe about a month ago, and we kind of discussed that the Republic trash services contract is ending in October. And we had a discussion about, you know, negotiating an extension to that, or whether there was an interest in going out for bids. There was a suggestion by you as a council to kind of do a survey of residents to kind of feel, see how residents are feeling about the current services. So, so we, you know, put that survey out. We received 159 responses. And overall, you know, 70% of the respondents expressed that they were either satisfied or very satisfied with the current trash services. 12% were neutral, and then there was a group of folks that were, were just satisfied as well. A little bit of the inverse there with the recycling side of things. I think you've heard that a lot. At least my understanding is from your constituents that there's a desire for increased recycling pickup, which Republic has indicated to me that they are willing to go to a bimonthly pickup in an extended agreement. So, you know, kind of with these results, I'd like to, to work on negotiating an extension with Republic. As a reminder, we kind of, you know, Douglas went out for bids, had two bids, and Republic was still the, the low bidder by far. So we have an idea of kind of where they're at as far as their pricing goes. They're also doing twice monthly recycling pickup. And so I plan on kind of starting those discussions and then taking those survey results and using that as the basis for things that we'd like to see improved in our, our extended agreement. And then just an update on the vacant positions. On Wednesday, there's a panel of us that will be interviewing for the Director of Planning and Zoning, looking to interview three or four candidates. The panel consists of myself, the Historic District Chair, the Zoning Board of Appeals Chair, the Planning Commission Chair, and then the mayor. And then the City Treasurer and Finance Officer. We have five candidates that are going to be interviewing on Thursday. The interview panel consists of myself, the city clerk, the mayor pro tem, and then council member Dean. So hope to have, you know, some, some, you know, staff positions filled soon here, so.
And anybody have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Very good. Question on the selection of the people that we're doing the interviews, was that offered to all council members to be a participant in that process?
So I asked the, the mayor, who she would recommend to, to serve on, on these interview panels.
Okay.
Russ, if you'd like to take my spot, you can have it because I'm going to have to miss work to do it. Your choice.
Yeah, I, I would like to participate if I can, so let's discuss it after the meeting.
One to six on Thursday. Can you do that?
Five-hour slot? We'll see. Yeah, thank you.
If not, I'll take it, but I need to know so I can make some arrangements at work.
Yeah, I'll talk after the meeting. Also, reading some of the information regarding the Wi-Fi strategy and so forth, it just calls into question that I think the city really needs to take a step back and develop a long-range telecommunications strategy, something I've suggested in the past. We have fiber optic opportunities as well as wireless coverage. Some action has been taken. I really think we need a larger strategy as a city to be able to address all the issues that people have regarding telecommunications and opportunities as well.
All right, anyone else? All right, I, I just highly recommend if you have an opportunity, our packets can be very long, but if you have an opportunity to read our city managers' reports, there's a lot of information there that really gives really great updates. And I just suggest reading that if you ever have an opportunity to do so, if you don't have a lot of time. Onto the treasurer report. Anything to add, Ryan?
You know, we, I said your deputy clerk and city clerk are still hard at work assisting with the more traditional treasurer-related duties. We, we had a kickoff meeting with Plant Moran today to discuss the accounting and year-end accounting and audit prep that, that will follow. So they're going to be getting up to speed here quite quickly and, you know, supporting us. And, and again, as a reminder, you know, assuming we, we make a hiring decision soon on a new treasurer and finance officer, Plant Moran will still be there as a supporting party to help kind of with that transition as well.
Okay. Onto the city clerk's report. Jamie?
Nothing to add other than the tax bills are out and so are absentee ballots.
Okay, great. Any questions for Jamie? All right, on to planning and zoning. Right back to you, Ryan.
Nothing in particular. Certainly, a lot of applications we're reviewing and processing and looking forward to that spot being filled too. Double duty for the last six months is, is weighing a little bit, so.
Do you have a number on the number of pending applications for short-term rentals?
Um, I, there was like four, I think, put in my box today, so unfortunately, I don't have a, probably a
Yeah.
completely accurate number, but
Okay.
certainly, well, including holds that may be renewals and then completely new. There's probably at least, you know, 10 to 15 that we're working on right now.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Ryan? Onto the Department of Public Works. Scott?
Yes.
Not here tonight. All right. Anybody here in his place?
No, and as, you know, and I just, I believe I may have raised this with council before, but if not, you know, my, my view with our staff essentially is that, you know, if they, if they have an agenda item for you, I certainly expect them to be there and own their agenda item and answer your questions and that sort of thing. We, we have them submitting a report to you to give you an update. If there's any questions that you have, you know, of our staff, and they're, they're not at the meeting, like, please let me know. Be happy to get you a response and get back with you. I just want to be respectful of our staff's time. If they're only coming to kind of, you know, answer questions on a report, trying to find that right work-life balance for each of our staff, so. So if you have any particular questions then for any staff that aren't here, be happy to take those back.
All right.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Ryan.
Uh, moving on to the sheriff's department. We have their report there. Anyone here that's representing the sheriff's department that wishes to speak?
Don't think so. Passes off.
I'm not representing the police department, but I do want to say goodbye and thank you to Deputy Conal LeJoyce, who's been with us for a couple of seasons. He was a great add to this community. I think that was his, um, first policing job outside of, uh, St. Ignis and, and I think he's just been a wonderful addition. I'm sad to see him go and I want to welcome Deputy Castro. I got to meet her the other night. Uh, was introduced to her and I think she's gonna be a great addition to our community, so looking forward to the, um, new deputy.
Hey.
I'd just like to add to what Councilmember Gardner said. I'm very intrigued that, uh, Officer Ca- Deputy Castro, uh, spent the sex, the spent past six months filling in as the school resource officer in the Fenville School District. And I know that requires some special training, so I'm quite pleased that, uh, the deputy has some background in SRO work.
Um, I wanted to say thank you for the report this month. We haven't seen that before. Uh, we've got all of our incidents here and, um, I, I like seeing that. Um, a, a total of calls for service was a hundred and eight. You know, there's fifty-six traffic stops and, and, uh, but, uh, I like the breakdown. Um, I know I've been asking for that for a while, uh, or had at previous meetings, so it's nice to see that and would like to see that every month if possible.
Um, all right, on to the engineer's report. I don't know if John Moxie's online, uh, but the report is in the packet if anybody has any questions. All right, we'll move on to boards, commissions and committees, the fire district administration board.
Dan Fox, council representative to the, uh, Sagatuck Township Fire District. It's a long enough meeting, so just three quick things. Um, first off, wasn't mentioned, that thank you, Ryan, for mentioning the, uh, fire service and the police and what have you. Jamie probably knows, I don't know if the rest of you know, the incident plan that was invisible largely to the public looking out for safety and emergency response during the Fourth of July was a forty-page plan. And the resources, Michigan State Police, Algon County, Douglas Police, Sagatuck Township Fire District were marshaled down at the yacht club, I think, down here. But again, largely, but those are people working, all those people working on their weekends, so thank you for bringing it up. Related to the Fourth of July thing and the after-action report I received from the chief, the single significant issue that he highlighted, like, three different points related to it, had to do with the candy throwing during the parade. That needs to be prohibited. It just needs to be stopped. There are, I think there were five or s- maybe six or seven, uh, fire apparatus in that parade. It's easy to think when you drive a car, well, I can see that kid in front of me. He would go in that slow. Some of those fire trucks that don't have the cab forward, that have the cab back, the first eight to ten feet in front of that vehicle is invisible to the driver. At least three of our professionals have said that's, we're not do- I'm not doing that again. It was too stressful for me. I, I have kids. I, I can't. And the kids don't know. The candy goes out, it can't possibly all get to the side, so lots of it falls in the streets and the kids go out and get it. And that's, it's, it's, it's a, a, a significant risk. It really needs to be prohibited. And I'm, I know for fact, partly for that reason, also for resources, they're gonna cut back dramatically on the number of vehicles that the fire district puts into that, not to be against the celebration, but simply to try and lower the risk of somebody getting hurt. And if it, I mean, there are tires on those trucks that are taller than kids that were running in front of them, so. It's scary. And last thing, fire, there's no report on the fire board meeting because that meeting is a week from today, four o'clock at the fire district, as it always is, at least until we move it to the township offices, which we may do. Um, everybody's I don't expect everybody to come, but you're all welcome.
All right, Dan, thank you. Any questions for Dan?
Mayor, I, I will just say I really agree about the candy throwing thing. It makes me very nervous as well. And, you know, if we are gonna continue to put on these large events for visitors and residents, um, we need more volunteers in the community. Um, honestly, if we can't get enough volunteers to keep people safe, we really need to rethink some of these events. I, I agree with Mr. Fox completely.
Okay, all right. Um, moving on to the inter-urban board, Gregory.
Our next meeting is a week from Tuesday, the sixteenth, I believe. Um, just ridership is up. I don't have the July fourth numbers. We had that free shuttle service that went from seven PM until eleven P- or twelve PM on, for the fireworks, and that was a free shuttle service that we provided. Um, a- also just a reminder that our voters voted for our two-point, uh, uh, five, uh, our, our, I'm sorry, it wasn't two-point-five, I wish it was. Um, our last mill and, um, and, uh, we are, we are mostly funded with federal dollars. Um, uh, and, uh, we're kind of a separate entity than the city, actually, in case folks don't know that. Um, uh, and, uh, also we are working, moving forward with plans for expanding our building with our grant that I've talked about several times. That'll probably take some time, you know, like everything does. Um, but, uh, we're looking forward to seeing plans in the next, uh, few weeks for our expansion for our building in Douglas.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Gregory? All right, moving on to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority.
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is next week, Tuesday.
Okay, uh, well, that is Cal Lake Harbor Authority and I appreciate that, Logan. Uh, we'll skip ahead. Uh, but Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority is very in the room or, it's so, it's, I know. Um, okay, but, um, any update that you wanted to share?
Not since the last meeting, no.
Okay, all right. And Logan said what he had to say. Great, we're moving on to item five, uh, zoning board of appeals. Anything?
Uh, they had no meeting this.
Okay. Uh, moving on to historic district commission, Russ.
Yeah, our July eleventh meeting has been canceled. Uh, where our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August first at six PM.
Okay, moving on to planning commission, Holly.
Uh, next meeting is July eighteenth at seven.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Parks and Public Works Committee.
Next meeting, July twenty-third, ten AM.
Great. And tri-community non-motorized trail study committee.
There's an update in the managers' report, I won't repeat it.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on to requests for payment, we have none. Um, on to item twelve, approval of accounts payable. Do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand dollars, two hundred, one hundred ninety thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a question on two invoices. Granicus for eighteen thousand, five forty-eight, forty-seven. Granicus is the company that's been hired by the city for short-term reg- short-term rental regulations. Um, I know there's been a lot of comments and questions about what services are being provided, which were all in the original agreement that the city agreed to. So my question at this point is, when will we start seeing reports on the work they're doing? Get updates from them in terms of some of the data that's being collected. Um, uh, and at this point also, too, we'd like to understand, this is gonna be a zero cost to the citizens. It was gonna be funded by the, uh, rentals and the fee increases, so I'm just trying to get a sense of where we are financially on this, so I think it's time to start working with them to get some information, so I'm assuming that's coming. Uh, two is on the, uh, ODC, there is a invoice for sixty-five thousand dollars for airport property. There was not much description beyond that. No, we didn't get a chance to discuss it. Uh, just curious in terms of what's being done at this point, what kind of the status is, it was nothing in the city manager report, so I'm just looking for an update.
Yeah, I was, I was, uh, David from the ODC and I were hoping to, uh, to meet earlier, uh, it got pushed back. So essentially, the Outward Discovery Center is, you know, reached out to the, the folks that they work with to draft conservation easements, the, their attorneys, uh, to, to begin that work, uh, and then they've reached out to, uh, the firm that they use to, uh, handle survey work, so they're gonna be doing an entire survey of the, the airport property and and if you recall, there was a an image, uh, of the, the entire airport property and, and a portion of it was green and a portion of it was red, and that red was kind of the, the portion of the, the airport property that was proposed to be in a conservation easement, so they're gonna take that to a survey level, uh, and then, um, you know, calculate the exact, uh, amount of acres and everything that would be potentially in a conservation easement. Um, so we'll, we'll have the survey data, they'll prepare the draft conservation easement language, and then we'll bring that, uh, you know, to the council and Parks and Public Works Committee probably as well to have some further discussion about, all right, this is the draft conservation easement language, you know, what do you like in it? What do you think needs to be reduced? You know, here's the, you know, the acreage that's that, that would be covered under conservation easement, you know, would you like to expand that? Would you like to reduce that? Um, so that's the work that's begun. I've also reached out to, uh, Eagle, uh, to have some discussions about, um, you know, the, the waterway in that area and some of those sensitivities, so there's, there, there are flood plains that, uh, you know, would are in that area as well as, uh, wetlands. And so, um, you know, Eagle's recommending some sort of, like, pre-application meetings. We have to make sure that the trails aren't impactful, wetlands as well, or that we're, you know, taking care of, of that issue as well as, as we approach this, so. Um, so David and I have a, a meeting on the books to kind of discuss, uh, you know, a firmer timeline for those other pieces as well, but that, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to introduction of ordinances, none unfinished business, none on to new business, item fifteen A. Um, this is our water regulations and, um, approving a change in the city's schedule of fees to establish a water capital improvement charge. It is on page thirty-seven in your packet. And if I could, uh, start with Ryan, uh, to explain where we're at. I know we've gone over this a number of times, but if Ryan could update.
Yeah, certainly, Madam Mayor, and maybe, uh, since we have a few more extra folks with us tonight, maybe a good, you know, educational opportunity just to kind of explain this a little bit more. I know most folks aren't, aren't tuning into, to meetings, uh, so, uh, certainly you as a council know back in, uh, you know, a few years ago, uh, the, the state's, uh, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Department, uh, essentially said, hey, you know, each municipality needs to have a, a, a water asset management plan that, that outlines how you're gonna take care of your water infrastructure that, that you own and are responsible for. And so, uh, each municipality said, yep, you know, we, we agree with you, uh, we'll, we'll certainly comply with that and, you know, we, we agreed to create that asset water management plan. That, uh, work was, uh, completed last year and then the fall, you, uh, approved that water asset management plan and said, hey, you know, th- these is our infrastructure that, that needs to be replaced. I mean, some of our water mains go back to the, the early nineteen hundreds. We have a lead and co- lead and copper rule with the state that we have to comply with to replace, uh, lead service lines, uh, in the community by, by twenty forty. And there's several million dollars and, and costs to that. I think, you know, the our, our entire set of needs at this point, I think, is over fifteen or sixteen million dollars. Uh, just in the next five years, we're looking at nine or ten million dollars. And so, the rate consultants, uh, with Baker Tilly, uh, uh, they were hired, uh, by us and, and Douglas as well, and, and they are on, online today for any additional questions that you might have. Um, they took a look at, at what our needs are. Any funding sources we currently have, which we have no dedicated funding sources for this particular work that, that needs to be done. Uh, and they took a look at, you know, you know, what what kind of funds do you need to raise to start taking a crack at, at completing some of this work? And again, telling Eagle, this is, you know, how we're going to pay for, you know, this work that, that needs to occur. Again, water mains throughout the city, um, some of them actually need to be increased in size to actually, you know, meet, uh, fire suppression standards. Um, so our friends in, in, in Douglas are a little bit ahead of us. They, they had the same rate consultant, approved a very similar plan for their specific needs. They actually recently, uh, back in January, implemented a fifteen dollar per meter equivalent per month charge. That was their recommendation from the rate consultant. Uh, my understanding is that Sagatuck Township, uh, who's had this particular fee for quite some time, at seven dollars, recently increased theirs to fifteen dollars. And the Baker Tilly recommendation to, uh, you is that, um, you consider a, a twenty-dollar per month per meter equivalent, uh, charge, uh, to be added to the water bills to start collecting dollars to pay for the water main replacements and, but uh, service line replacements, uh, that, that work that we need to do in the, the next several years. Knowing that this fee is not gonna take care of all of it, you know, we're, this is a multi-pronged approach, you know, certainly we're applying for grant dollars and we've applied for state revolving loan fund dollars. Um, but even with that, we would need a way to, to pay that over time. Uh, and if you recall from, you know, the, the public hearing that we had with the state revolving loan fund, that even if we had received, you know, grant funding for half of the costs, you still were looking at probably a twenty-three-dollar per month meter equivalent unit charge. So, um, so we've had this discussion, you know, with you as, as a council for several months now and over a couple of meetings, you asked us to prepare the necessary documents to implement this charge. Uh, I've talked with, uh, Cal Lake about, you know, the time that they would need to implement it. It would take them about ninety days to, to put it on the water bills and then they would be remitting those dollars as they receive them. Um, so the documents before you tonight would essentially update your ordinance to allow for this particular, uh, charge. A resolution then would, would set the actual charge. Um, it's really important to note that these are not, uh, you know, these aren't, uh, like, property tax dollars that are, um, you know, being collected and going to a general pot of money. These dollars that are being collected can only be used because, you know, there's a fee for this particular service can only be used for water infrastructure, capital-related projects. Um, you won't be able to use these dollars for any other purpose. They'll be completely separate and only used for those purposes going forward.
All right, the sample motion is on page thirty-eight.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number two four zero seven zero eight dash A, amending the water regulations in resolution number two four zero seven zero eight dash A, approving a change in the city's schedule of fees to establish a water capital improvement charge.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, a couple of questions. One is, do we, I don't recall, did we see a yearly revenue expectation from this?
Yes, so, um, the recommendation, or, yeah, in year one, at, at twenty dollars per month per MU, you're looking at a little over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, now, the, the recommendation from the rate consultant is that, you know, this is, you know, the first charge and that you really should be then increasing this amount by three doll- adding an extra three dollars per year for the next several years as well. Some of that, you know, we, we'll have to evaluate year by year and, you know, how are we, are we getting grant dollars? Are we, you know, successful with those, those opportunities? Or if we're not getting grant dollars, then we may have to look at some increases to the fee, you know?
Thank you, and, and I'm sensitive to some of the comments I made this evening, and one that was pretty interesting to me was the idea of sunsetting this or at least putting some restriction on how often we need to go back and look at the fees. Um, you know, my experience is, is that a fee will stay as long as you allow it to stay, as opposed to reviewing it every five years, for instance, saying, you know, have we reached the goal that this was meant to achieve? I know twenty forty-one or twenty forty is the year we have to be compliant with the federal expectations, all lead pipes are replaced. So we didn't discuss that, but when it came up tonight, I said, you know, that makes sense because we should have something that gets us to revisit similar to what the CPI yearly increase is, that's being recommended. We have a, you know, maybe not yearly for that fee, but I don't know, I just put that out there for conversation. And then, uh, three is, um, the township has recently raised theirs to fifteen dollars, Douglas is at fifteen, uh, we're at twenty-four, you know, eighty-four point five percent of the residences in town or properties in town is the reason why, um, they recommended twenty as opposed to maybe fifteen. Not that we should be comparing ourselves on this, but what was the thought process on that?
Yeah, we just, we just have more and, and, and capital costs and, and, and replacement needs, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Andy maybe to answer a couple of your questions about sunsetting and, and, uh, and how they came up with the rate structure, if you'd like, yeah.
Hi there, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Andy.
Hi there, uh, Andy Campbell, Baker Tilly, appreciate the time. Um, yeah, this is a pair of what Ryan had said, that the capital improvement plan for the city of Sagatuck is very, very in-depth. Um, and is going to be much more costly than the expectations, at least right now, for the city of the village of Douglas and Sagatuck Township. Uh, I don't have their numbers in front of me, but I know that we've been talking about, um, like, the, in ten, twenty million dollars needed in the next few years for the city of Sagatuck. And so this is really just to get started in terms of trying to fund the needs of the system. To go back to what you said about sunsetting and everything, I, I will say, um, it is always good to do some sort of update, whether it, some communities do it yearly, some do it biannually, some do it every five or ten years, whatever it may be, that works for your system. Um, however, it should be expected that this will be a charge needed forever. Um, the, the reality is, is that the system a lot of this, this, I, I know I'm kind of telling you what you already know most likely, but, uh, a lot of this is because of the ongoing discussions with Kalamazoo Lake Water and Sewer Authority um, about who owns what, and there's still ongoing discussions that will take a long time and that, that um, that space to figure out who owns what and who's responsible for paying for it. Um, but that has kind of clouded everything in the past for the su- for the city in terms of what you're responsible for and how much you need to save to do those capital improvements, but the expectation should be that you will constantly need this money to maintain the water system forevermore. Um, we'll, we'll recommend on, like, looking at this every, every year, every few years or whatever it makes sense for the city to make sure that the rate is justifiable. But you should expect that there will be, need to be some sort of rate every year.
Okay.
Thank you, Andy.
Any other questions?
Out of curiosity, I don't know if you have this number, well, the eighty-four percent, most of our residents, uh, that might see an increase up to twenty dollars, do we have an average of what our houses are? Do we have an average on what our residential houses are, uh, are paying?
With their bills per month? Um, I don't know if Andy would have that in. I don't know if Andy would have that information.
Yeah, I do. So, um, so the metric that is used by the states, the feds, and just a general,
Right.
Just general customer. So I got to qualify the heck out of it here that it may be different depending on your particular situation for people that are listening in, but, um, the general homeowner uses approximately forty-five hundred gallons per month. The current charge, at least as, as what we had, I don't think Cal Lake has adjusted their rates recently. I don't know if they have or not, but, um, as of like the last few months when we knew Cal Lake's rates, that, that rate payer was paying twenty-five dollars and forty cents just for the water portion of the bill. So that, we're only talking about water. They have a sewer rate as well if they're on the sewer system, but just for the water portion of the bill, that, that customer would pay twenty-five dollars and forty cents to Kalamazoo Lake Authority, which, which covers the, the cost of the authority, the plant, um, and distribution to the city system. And then the twenty-dollar rate that the city would be charging would be on top of that for an example bill of forty-five dollars and forty cents per month.
Thank you.
All right.
I think that, that makes it a little bit more understandable to folks, uh, to see what exactly they're
All right.
They'll be expecting to pay.
Yeah, any other discussion? Okay, all right, if you could, uh, the clerk could call the rule, Jamie.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, we are moving on to item fifteen B, Planning Commission Recommendation for Caps on Short-Term Rentals in the R1 Residential District. Um, before we get into this discussion, um, our legal counsel, um, has asked if, um, I asked the question if any council members want to disclose a conflict of interest.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a conflict of interest. I'm currently in the process of applying for a short-term rental myself, and I must recuse myself from the conversation.
All right, Logan, thank you. And if you want to go over anything, um, as far as a conflict of interest, I know there's been questions about it.
Sure, yeah. So the, the city charter specifically defines a conflict of interest as a issue or matter in which, uh, a council member or a member of their family has a proprietary or financial interest, or is the result of which they may receive or gain a financial benefit. Um, so that is the charter definition of a conflict of interest. I mean, we've, we've already discussed that a pending short-term rental license application would fit that standard and constitute a disqualifying conflict of interest. Uh, so council member White here cannot deliberate or vote on anything. Uh, and then I, I guess, as, as I said last time, I was in front of you, if anyone else has a disqualifying conflict of interest, uh, you have a duty to disclose it, uh, or if you otherwise feel that you can't act impartially or in the best interest of the city, I would ask you to go ahead and, and say so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for Mr. Witty. Were all council members asked to be evaluated for potential conflict of interest?
Um, I, I was asked to look at a few specific circumstances, um, based on the information available.
So not all were evaluated?
Supposedly you do it right now.
Yeah.
But everyone was evaluated. So I would rely on, on, on self-disclosure.
Yeah.
Uh, the other question was in regards to the, um, uh, thi- this brings up the topic I brought up before. I think we really need to have a review of our ethics policy for the city. It's, by the last numbers I saw, it's at least sixteen years old and, and the situation is brought up in my mind. The comment I made two years ago that we should have this done, uh, sooner rather than later. This just brings up another reason why we should get this done as a city council, not for discussion tonight, but just put it on the table again. Thanks.
I'm happy to put it on the record that I do not have a short-term rental interest. I live in a single-family home where I'm raising my two kids. I don't have an ADU. I'm just here full-time as a resident and a voter.
Same goes for me.
Same here.
Single-family homeowner, never been a short-term rental owner, don't have an ADU, don't work for any real estate, uh, investment companies.
Um, yeah, I don't work for any real estate company either. My income doesn't depend on short-term rentals. I don't own property here. I also don't have a business. So if anybody has the least conflict of interest at this table, it would certainly be me.
Okay, and, uh, I own a home in the city of Sagatuck. I short-term rented for three years and I no longer short-term rental. Okay, all right. Any other discussion as far as that's concerned? All right, so moving on, uh, Ryan, if you could go to, uh, page seventy-nine in the packet.
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the city council reject the planning commission recommendation for short-term caps.
I'd like to second.
Okay, any discussion?
Sure, I'll go ahead real quick. Um, and as, as I said at the meeting, and, uh, uh, I will repeat myself, I want to thank, there, there were a lot of newer folks here, um, that were, um, that weren't in supportive of the SWIFT movement, uh, that lived on Park Street. I haven't seen the same amount of people. Today at the meeting, again, it's been fifteen folks that spoke up, almost all of them residents, against this quick action of capping at twenty percent. There's been, uh, five that spoke out today, um, that were in favor of caps, of this cap in particular, this twenty percent vote. Um, I've been counting it every meeting. It's been, I, it's not a silent majority, major majority, it's majority, minority. Um, and, uh, so I stand with our property owners, businesses, and the majority of folks who have voiced their opinions at all of our meetings, called, emailed, visited me about, uh, the decision we're going to make. Um, I cannot and will not support an extreme cap of twenty to twenty-five percent on short-term rentals. That will eventually decrease up to seven thousand beds per year, supporting our economy that depends solely on tourism. No, I'm not against caps. I'm not in one camp or the other. I heard somebody talk about, oh, there's two camps, not necessarily, folks. It's not black and white like that. Don't we wish, I wish everything was black and white, but it's not. Um, uh, uh, maybe caps might be a decision, who knows? But I cannot and will not support an extreme cap, an extreme cap of twenty to twenty-five percent on short-term rentals that will eventually decrease, which, uh, we understood through our, uh, chair of the planning commission, who did a little bit of homework with the conservative number, would be seven thousand beds per year. Um, and not right now, it's not going to happen now, uh, i- in the course of time. Um, when I make decisions, I think about, you know, what's this town's going to be like after I'm gone? Not, not, what, what not, what are the results going to be right away or while I'm living here? I think about what's going to be, what's going to be here when I'm gone, twenty years from now, thirty years from now, forty years from now. Um, we deserve a pause and an economic impact study before going further with this discussion. We simply don't have the data to support the decision. The only thing fueling this decision is a motion, speculation, and one online survey that was taken, it was, it was taken by a few, you know, a nice healthy amount of folks, but it certainly wasn't most of our property owners taking that. Uh, the STR committee didn't recommend this twenty percent cap, and neither do I. Uh, we've just created these new ordinances, we've increased fees and addressed parking on the hill. Let those things settle before we get too carried away infringing on our economy without knowing the consequences. Maybe we will get a cap, maybe we need, but we need to slow the pace, take our time, and have an economic impact study just for our town. I do think that, I don't think we're better than, I don't think we're special, more special, but I think our economy is a lot different than towns like we had, uh, heard and we've heard from council, uh, council person, uh, Holly Anderson about Chelsea, um, and these other towns that you've looked at. Um, I think we deserve it to our residents, to our business owners, to everybody that has spoke up here, and everybody, the majority of people, of different people that have spoken up at our meetings against this extreme cap, to have, again, an economic impact study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank. I do want to say thank you to everybody that's here this evening, as well as, as has been paying attention to this, to this topic. It has been around for a couple of years. Um, as a matter of fact, it's been around quite, quite, quite a bit longer than that, but it's gotten attention over the past two years with the Short-Term Rental Task Force, of which I was one of the key people on the planning commission at the time to start that idea. And then Mayor Dean, uh, when he was mayor of the council at the time, took it from there and, uh, we instituted it. Um, I'm still with caps. I'm still trying to answer a basic question is what problem are we trying to solve? I still don't have a clear answer. I've heard the word density. Uh, density means different things to different people. I'm still struggling with what problem are we trying to solve? And in deference to the city council, the city council took action as a result of the Short-Term Rental Task Force study. Uh, in March of this year, I think it was March, we instituted some new regulations as well as new fee schedules. We hired Granite as a company to help us better regulate our short-term rentals. That program is just literally getting underway. We, as I asked the question earlier, we haven't seen much data yet. It's brand new. And so when this first came up, the problem with short-term rentals was the lack of regulation. And the city took, the city council took action on that. Caps were something that took a meteoric, or pardon me, that short-term rentals took a meteoric rise during the pandemic. Um, and that is something that was came on quick. It's had impact on our community, both plus and minus in some people's minds. From my perspective, you don't get out of a situation like that overnight. We didn't get there overnight. We should take our time. We should have an economic study. I want to thank Mr. Greg Hour, who put a, put some time and effort into a, uh, presentation that was in our packet this evening. If you have not read that, I would suggest you do. It's, it's good data. Um, that is the kind of thing this council should actually take as a example of what we need to do to be able to understand the long-range financial impact of this decision on the community. And I'm going to read real quickly from the, um, Short-Term Rental Task Force, uh, report. A key, a key takeaway from the task force, public engagement survey in Town Hall and public comment during meetings has been centered on ordinance and regulation compliance from patrons and property owners of short-term rentals. A significant consensus has been that existing ordinances, regulations need to be followed as it pertains to noise, trash, parking, and occupancy limits of short-term rentals. That's underway. Short-term rental cap section, page eleven, summary, when viewed as a whole, a citywide cap policy was not overwhelmingly supported by those who responded. The response data indicates that full-time residents viewed a citywide cap more favorably than those who identified as being part-time residents. Public comment has further supported the statement that a citywide cap would potentially have negative impacts on the economic well-being in the city. The public at large has indicated that short-term rentals provide temporary lodging for tourists who further support the local businesses of the area. Therefore, placing a citywide cap on short-term rentals has a potential negative connotation. And page fifteen, policy number five, one of their five options, the last one was no action. An alternative to creating a cap on the number of short-term rentals within the city would be to not establish a maximum number. Market data and other market and other housing markets are trending towards a stabilization of our housing stock and a reduction in the number of new short-term certificates. So long as a property owner can comply with the established zoning and fire safety regulations, a certificate should be issued. Additionally, an increase in active enforcement measures that addresses noise, trash, and parking concerns could be undertaken, which the city has done, which may alleviate some of the adjacent residential concerns. I know that this has actually been dialed back to just the residential zone districts. Uh, that isn't it, that is a change from what was originally in the report. Again, I respect everybody on the planning commission. There are some very smart people in this community, and I'm very humbled to be able to serve with them and serve as an elected official of the entire community. That also includes the business community, includes the part-time residents, it includes the voters, it includes everybody. And again, that economic impact study, in my mind, is very important for me to be able to make a good decision about what the impact of this long-term decision is going to have.
Okay, anyone else?
I think that was for you and not me. Um, Jamie, can you, um, can you pull up the, uh, page ninety-one? So I wa- I want to look at the, um, economic study that Mr. Hour, um, sent and that's in our packet. Um, so I spent some time, I, I kind of flipped through the whole thing, but really focused and so if you read nothing else, um, read this. So, um, first of all, Charlevoy isn't raising their cap. I called their city planner today, their zoning, city planner, zoning administrator, uh, Jonathan Sheal, uh, who said that there's, they are absolutely not raising their cap. In fact, and their cap is now at ten percent. Um, and in fact, the city council there has just discovered it and, uh, quote from him, there is zero interest from city council to raise the cap. We got the cap right. Um, so your point number one is wrong. Um, point number two, n- not all of our tourists stay in short-term rentals. I mean, we have tourists who come from short-term rentals in Douglas and the township or who are day trippers. So I think, um, you know, that's a, a, a bit of a stretch that, to link all of that.
If everyone could please be quiet in the audience, we just want everyone to have a chance to speak, please.
And then, um, kind of alarming in some of your financial modeling, Sagatuck receives a tiny fraction of the sales tax we generate. Michigan School Aid Fund receives approximately seventy-three percent of total sales tax revenue, and the state constitution provides that fifteen percent of collections from the four percent portion of the sales tax is distributed to cities, villages, and townships on a per capita basis. And at eight-hundred-and-forty residents, we're kind of near the bottom of that list. So, um, it is alarming to me that this is presented to us as expert data when in fact it's not. So, that is a preface. And then to reiterate what, um, what Mr. Gardner said, we have been studying this for a long time. So anyone who thinks we're rushing this, um, I, I don't know what a proper pace would be, but, um, the task force started a year ago, April, and discussions about, um, caps and short-term rental issues in general started well before that. Um, and to, to one point, the, um, the city has actually implemented every recommendation, I believe, from the task force, and there was no consensus among the task force about caps. So they suggested that the planning commission and, and city council, um, deliberate on that more, and that's exactly what we're doing. And, uh, and thank you to that task force for their great work. Okay, I've got four points I want to make, and some of this is, um, you know, is new, uh, or at least, uh, information we've talked about, but, um, just kind of crystallized. So for those of us who are saying, uh, that we're trampling their property rights, consider the zoning ordinance for the community residential ordinance. And Bobby got, read that earlier and Joe Clark highlighted as well. But the Hill is in, it's a city, it's a residential R1 district. And I won't read the whole thing because Bobby was gracious, gracious enough to do that. Um, but I'll read the point that says, "The district is designed to protect and promote low-density, single-family residential use and development in the city." So I don't think any honest broker can argue that the Hill, which is a residential neighborhood with thirty-seven percent commercial lodging permits, meets its zoning requirement, that's our zoning requirement, that says the district is designed to protect and promote low-density, single-family residential uses and development in the city. If anyone has a right to balk about their property rights, it's the people on the Hill who bought a house in a residential neighborhood that has since become overrun by cur- commercial lodging businesses. Our charter stipulates that city council, seven of us, are responsible for enforcing our zoning ordinances. Under Michigan Zoning Enablement Act, which is Michigan law, only the ZBA can grant a variance. City council doesn't have the power and the planning commission doesn't have the power to grant a variance. And, and lord knows, I mean, thirty-seven percent is not a low-density, single-family residence. So in all seriousness, I ask each of us who oppose the cap, how you can justify willful disregard of our zoning ordinance. So that's my first point. Second point, for those who say twenty percent cap will take too many rentable homes and bedrooms away from the Hill, I remind them that residential permits citywide will decline just twelve percent from levels just six months ago, when I suspect we had caught up virtually, or had caught virtually all of the properties operating without a permit. And when our, and when our tourism was thriving, I mean, our tourism was thriving. So that's thirty permits below six months ago, permits that will only go away through attrition when the home is sold or transfers ownership, attrition that will likely take several years and that doesn't factor in new permits that will be issued in our non-R1 districts. Using the planning commission chair's formulas, the forty permits represent a hundred-and-forty-five bedrooms per night, and my very conservative assumption is that it will take at least two years to reach the cap. So we're looking at a reduction of seventy-three bedrooms per night in the first year of the cap, assuming that no new permits are issued in non-R1 districts. There is evidence that we can provide rooms for most, if not all, of those people through excess capacity in our existing lodging accommodations, whether B and Bs that have had some vacancies this summer, motel rooms, unrented S, SDRs, or again, through new SDRs in other districts. According to Air DNA- According to Air DNA statistics, and that's the data that short-term rental folks use to, to, you know, understand the market dynamics, there is capacity among SDRs in our market. Last July, SDRs in this market were about 85% occupied. So it's, that's a, uh, that's last July, so a year ago. Summer season comparable eggs to eggs or apples to apples. Last month, so June this year, SDRs in our market were 72% occupied. Now, some of those SDRs are in Douglas and some are in the township, but those communities send lots of tourists to Sagatuck to enjoy our broader selection of restaurants, bars, entertainment, shops, and parks. Third point, for those who say that part-time residents surveys responses should count as much, or shouldn't count as much. I'm sorry, let me start over. For those who say that part-time resident survey responses should count as much as full-time residents, should we also give them the right to vote in our Sagatuck city elections? Part-time residents have full voice and vote where they live full-time, as it should be. The Short-Term Rental Task Force, and I would argue all of us and every planning commissioner, has carefully considered the views and perspective of broader stakeholder groups, including part-time residents and business owners. But I strongly believe the opinions of people who live here full-time have more weight than those who don't, especially when it comes to our residential neighborhoods. And the clear majority, based on the survey, shows that full-time residents want a residential cap, and it's not close. It's 60% for all full-time residents. And for people on the Hill and people west of the peninsula, it's 68 and 70%. Fourth point, to those who say, "Let's let the ordinances we passed have time to take effect." And those are great ordinances. They have to do with health and safety. They help us recoup our costs. They get to some of the nuisances. But they have absolutely no impact on the density of commercial businesses in our R1 districts. Only caps can address that. Your logic in saying, "Give nuisance ordinances time," is like telling your car mechanic to hold off repairing a blown head gasket because you bought a new set of tires three months ago. Final thought, as the city's policymakers, our overarching question should be what kind of tourist community we want. One that honors our residents and our residential zoning ordinances as we did in our recent past, or full-throttle SDRs on the Hill, residents be damned. A 20% residential cap will not hurt our tourist economy. It is a 10, or it is, I'm sorry, it is a 12% reduction in the number of licenses from year end last year. Licenses that will go away only through attrition, which will likely take two, three, or more years to materialize. Our part-time residents, the people who live in our neighborhoods, want a 20% cap. It's time to enforce our zoning and honor the will of the people who elected us while still providing robust tourist economies with room to grow, or tourist accommodations with room to grow SDRs in our non-R1 neighborhoods. To riff on a phrase from our governor, "It's time to pass the damn caps."
All right, who else would like to speak?
Well, there's a motion on the table, so I think.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I do realize that I did not disclose my potential conflict of interests, which was substantially by the attorneys. I do not have a conflict of interest. Uh, 245 Spirit Street does have a short-term rental certificate. Uh, it's been in effect since a couple of months ago, I'm not exactly sure. But, uh, it's an accelerated dwelling unit, and we are the primary resident of the property. So, and I've been a short-term rental owner in the past. As a matter of fact, we utilized that tool, that and long-term rentals, when I was living in Chicago to be able to sustain and be able to pay our mortgage. It was not a money-making venture by any means, cover the costs. And that option was important to me financially and my wife at the time. Um, and I know many others that use the same tool.
Jake, do you have anything to add to what Russ just mentioned?
Yeah, so when I was asked to opine about this at the workshop last week, uh, we, we were aware of this information. Uh, holding a short-term rental license, um, that, that is distinguishable from having an application, whereas the council's decision tonight can determine whether or not, uh, Councilmember White will be able to utilize his property as a short-term rental at all. The impacts on, uh, Councilmember Gardner will be, uh, a lot more generalized, less specific, uh, and, and more indirect. Michigan law recognizes that a indirect financial impact, uh, does not necessarily create a conflict of interest. Um, if we rigidly applied to the conflict of interest laws to bar someone with any kind of financial interest from voting, um, the council could never do anything like increase taxes.
Okay.
Our opinion is that's not a conflict.
All right, thank you, Jake. Appreciate it.
Um, just, I, I just want to, if no one else wants to speak at this time, I just want to add a few things. Um, you know, I, I've struggled with this because I can see both sides of this issue. A lot of people know that I probably land in the swing vote area here. Um, but I've spent a lot of time, um, you know, listening to everyone. When we were talking about problems that we're trying to solve, you, you asked about the problems we're trying to solve. And obviously, we've talked about density issues in certain neighborhoods. Uh, we've talked about, um, protecting and promoting low-density, single-family residential uses in our residential areas. Um, but I want to talk about the population decline in our area. In 2022, our census said we had 751 residents. 10 years earlier, in 2012, we had 923 residents. And then 10 years before that, in 2002, Sagatuck had 1,050 residents. I just worry that there's a time where we'll be down below 500 residents. And what does that look like for our community? Because people don't live here full-time. It's going down every 10 years, uh, you know, by several hundred people. Um, and you know it when you look around. Um, this is not something that is unique to Sagatuck. Read an article the other day, I mean, I was on the Short-Term Rental Task Force. So I've been studying this issue for the last several years, and honestly, since I've been on council for four years. Um, every tourist community in our country, and frankly, around the world, are dealing with how to manage this for full-time residents. And I just believe there needs to be balance. And I feel like we need to do something. Um, and I feel like we need to do something when it comes to our residential areas only. There's room to grow in our non-residential areas. Um, there's new developments that are, are, you know, being proposed right now for our waterfront that will add more lodging opportunities. Um, there's more opportunities to, um, have short-term rentals in areas that are not residential areas. Um, we just have to protect our residential areas and find a good balance. That's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just add that within my block radius, block and a half radius of my house, in the past two years, we have had three short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Which were sold to, to people who have actually turned them into primary residences.
Yeah.
And I'd love to hear that.
Those are six additional community members voting.
Yeah.
So that's where the, the market, in my opinion, is dictating what this is going to look like. And I, I just, I continue to see that happen.
Madam Mayor, I think that, if I may, um, most people know where most of us land on this. There's a motion on the table. I would like to call the question.
Okay, all right. Uh, if anybody is opposed to that, we can call the question right now. Jamie?
This is the motion to reject.
Yes. All right, Jamie, did you want to read back the motion at this point, just so everyone is clear? Okay, if you could call the roll.
Anderson?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Dean?
No.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
No.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to direct city staff to prepare the necessary ordinance amendments, resolution language, and policy necessary to implement a cap on the total number of STR licenses that may be issued within the city's R1 residential districts consistent with the following. The cap will be established by resolution of the city council in an amount approximately equal to 20% of the dwelling units in each R1 district. The cap will not operate retroactively, and existing STR licenses will remain valid unless there is a transfer of the property or the license is revoked, is revoked or lapses. The commercial property located at 560 Campbell in the Peninsula West District will be exempt from the caps, and any licenses granted to dwelling units at that address will not count toward the caps. Once available, new STR licenses will be issued by a lottery system. The planning commission will hold a public hearing on the zoning amendment necessary to implement the cap and will not assist with the preparation of the amendment to the STR police powers ordinance.
Uh, do I have a second? Second, all right, discussion.
I think I owe a, a explanation on a couple of things. Um, uh, mostly, I wanted to talk about the commercial property located at 560 Campbell. That's, um, commonly known as the secret of Sagatuck. That's operated there for a very long time as a commercial enterprise. It is in an R1 district. I don't think it would be fair to, um, hurt their business in any way by, um, affecting that with whatever kind of short-term license that comes from it may. I mean, if they wind up having short-term licenses or not, I just would like that to, as a carve-out, because it is a, a non-conforming use in the residential district, but it is a commercial property. And that's why that was added, in case anyone has any questions.
Is everybody familiar with that?
Yeah, and I appreciate you, um, looking out for them.
Yep.
I do too.
It just seems fair. Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, there's, there's been, to that topic, there's been some text messages I've been a part of over the weekend that apparently there's been some conversations with Beachway, um, regarding to the same issue. And I don't know if that's true or not, but this is the kind of thing that's been happening in the.
Beachway is not in an R1 district. I'd like to keep this tight.
I understand. I'm just saying, is that just informational-wise, I'm beginning to hear some things that are taking place, which I don't know.
Can you confirm that Beachway is not in the R1 district?
I believe that's in the commercial, yeah.
Yeah.
So would not be subject to.
They would not be subject to it.
Not be subject to it, yeah.
Correct, that's a commercial district. Thank you.
So again, we're just, uh, dealing with the residential area. Does anyone want to say anything else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, Mayor. Um, you know, Sagatuck's been a tourist town, depended on tourism probably since 1909, when the steam ships used to come from Chicago. It's going to be a tourist town, and it's going to make a lot of money, and it's going to be a very prosperous town 100 years from now, I'm sure of it. It's because of the environment, it's because of the people, it's because of the community. My number one job is to, um, deliver for the voters. And I told the voters I was going to make short-term rentals my top priority when I ran for council two years ago. And, um, I'm true to my word, and that's why I'm going to be a yes on this. You know, there's two paths here. You either let this council, that many of us helped move this community through COVID. We did things like worked with our colleagues, some of them were here earlier tonight, to make sure business people could find ways to get customers safe and out in, to the streets so they could feel safe dining. We're past COVID, the town prospered, the town did well. Short-term rentals, we're also part of it, there's no doubt about that. But we've actively managed our ordinances, you know? We've normalized the outdoor dining, we, we've brought it back into our normal ordinances. You know, we continue to be a council, which I'm very proud of, that actively manages issues that the voters bring to us and the people bring to us. For me to just simply sit on my hands and, and not act on things, that's just not in my DNA. If somebody gives me a problem, hires me to do a job, I'm going to do the job. And if I've got it wrong, all you voters have 119 days to, uh, let me know if I got it wrong. And I'm, I'm good with, with whatever your decision is in the general election. Having said that, all of you should really look on the balance beam now. Do I trust this council to continue to manage this? First of all, short-term rentals aren't going anywhere. Do we have the ability to tweak it if we need to, if we see unintended consequences? Do we have the ability to go up to 25, down to 15? Yeah, we do, as a council. We can move quickly if we need to, if there are unintended consequences. But if you don't like this vote and want to send us packing in November, which is your right as a voter, you're probably going to be facing, and it's not a threat, because the papers have been filed with the clerk, you're going to be facing a ballot initiative, which is the nuclear option. A ballot initiative sticks a cap at 20% for two years, council cannot touch it, and any tweaks would require a supermajority. Another choice. So I'm comfortable with my vote yes tonight, and I'm willing to continue to make hard decisions, serve these people that, that vote and live here, that live and die here. And I'm going to continue to raise my family here. So I'm a yes.
Yeah, would you like to send the copy down? I just want to, uh, say one more thing, and I, I don't like to, uh, do a lot of anecdotal things because I, I prefer data. Um, but I just want to just give a personal experience. So, uh, gosh, it was about 2012-ish. Um, I moved into the Summer Grove subdivision. Um, I was a single mom with two kids, and, um, I lived there for three years. It's in Douglas. So, um, I was able to rent a house for three years, um, as a single mom. Um, I was, I was very fortunate, um, to find a house for rent in our area because that subdivision's HOA, uh, won a lawsuit, so short-term rentals would no longer be allowed in that area. It was a big battle, you know, in that subdivision. Um, you know, a lot of people are very closely, um, tied to that. Um, but my point is, um, I was able to live there long-term for three years. Um, that subdivision is now fully developed. Um, the home that I was staying in was for sale for $264,000. I know because I kept wanting to buy it, but I wasn't quite there yet. Um, all of those homes in that subdivision are now double that. And that was in 2015 when I moved out. Um, so I'm saying that there's, there's areas that homes can still be rented out long-term. Um, there's ways that people can still have income out of their properties. Um, it just gives a more diverse, um, uh, list of people who could possibly rent those homes. Um, and whether it's in Sagatuck or elsewhere, um, we do lack affordable housing, homes that people could rent long-term. So I just keep that in mind when you're thinking of, um, all sides of this issue. Right? Anybody else? All right, we have the motion.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncie?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, we are moving on to item 15C, staff wage scale and paid holiday adjustments. It's on page 85 of your packet.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I ask a question? Um, regarding this item, since this just came through in the packet, it was not worked shop. I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion to our next workshop for potential adoption at the next council.
All right, if everyone could kind of be quiet, we still have, I know everybody's moving in and out, but if we could, um, keep it down while we still have city. If we could keep it down, we still have city business to take care of. All right, uh, Russ, please continue.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, considering the length of the meeting, as well as, uh, everything that's been discussed, and given the lateness of the information regarding the staff wage study, which has been something we've been asking for, I would ask that we table this for discussion at the workshop and potential adoption at the next council meeting. I would like an opportunity to discuss and evaluate this in further detail.
I would appreciate that as well.
What is your motion? Go ahead.
Well, until our next council meeting.
Till our next workshop.
Yeah, workshop and then potential adoption at the next.
Okay, so the motion is to table that.
Action at the next regular meeting? Is that, I'm sorry, because I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yes, and to have it as an agenda item at our next workshop for potential adoption at the following council meeting.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion? Okay, any discussion?
A question for the city manager. Will that, uh, impact, um, I'm assuming if we did that, it, we could still give people their, if, if it, we can give them their raises for the new fiscal year. Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Does it, does it place a burden on you for others?
Gregory was the second, yes.
What's that?
You were the second on the motion.
Yeah.
Does it place a burden on your staff? And in what way would this potentially delay?
Yeah, I mean, certainly entering retroactive wage increases would be, you know, a little more work. That, that's essentially why I brought it tonight. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, we've been working on this for a little while. We, we have the data, um, you know, prepared to, you know, explain it in, in full tonight. Um, and, and I want to, you know, work towards getting our staff, you know, uh, a wage increase on the step scale at least, um, related to, um, their, their job performance and experience. And then, um, obviously, at the end of the year, my recommendation that we adjust the scale on a regular annual basis for inflation. So that way, it's always keeping up with, um, you know, a certain scale, so.
It, Mayor, it appears to be four pages in the packet. Um, if colleagues on council would like the, the opportunity to read it tonight, uh, maybe we just take a brief recess, use the restrooms, go talk to. brief recess, use the restrooms, go talk to WTV, whatever. You guys want to recess? So you can read it.
I think this needs further discussion, Councilmember Dean, at a workshop meeting and further opportunity to have the discussion. Mentally, I'm a little bit past it this evening with everything that's going on, so, and again, just having gotten this information, this is not out of disrespect to the staff at all, it's just a matter of being able to process and study the information and have some discussion with my fellow council members.
I'm happy to have that discussion now.
Yeah, I'm okay to have this discussion now, so any questions that you might have?
Would my colleagues like a recess?
I still would like to have it as a workshop, and I don't think that's kicking a can down the road. I don't think this is pressing. It's not anything, right, Ryan? It's not anything that's pressing. You said that we were still able to give appropriate raises where they need to go, or?
Well, that we could make retroactive wages if we wanted to. My reason why I'm bringing this forth now is to move on some potential wage adjustments for our staff, yeah.
I mean, if you guys need time to read your packet, we can take a break.
Councilmember Dean, I have read the packet. I wanted an opportunity to further study and discuss this with my fellow council members.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, I'm willing to do it now. What questions might you have about it?
I'm, I mean, in all respect.
We literally got this packet Monday, if I'm, no.
No, we got it Friday.
Whatever day it was. And I wanted an opportunity to ask some questions, and I've not had a chance. I was very focused on the other items in the agenda this evening, understanding that we could probably have an opportunity to discuss this at a workshop and then adopt anything we need to adopt at the first meeting in August.
All right.
I was also very overwhelmed with correspondences for the first two items in our packet. Yes, I did read the packet. I just would like to spend a little bit more time reviewing this and talking to fellow council folk.
All right, well, Jamie, if you would like to, we have a motion on the table. If you could call the rule?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Dean?
No.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Elsmann?
Yes.
Okay, then we will, we will table it until our workshop?
Thank you.
All right. And moving on then, and I apologize. Yeah, it's, we will bring it back up to the workshop on Wednesday for a decision on the following Monday. And I apologize, but I want to give you both enough time. If you have some emails that need to, where you can go through and make sure you ask any questions that you might have of Ryan.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, to public comments on any items, go ahead.
Me again, Jane Underwood, 130 Perryman Street. First of all, the Legal Women Voters, Holland Areas sponsoring a voter forum and a meet and greet the 17th of this month at the Douglas Library for the candidates for Aligan Sheriff, prosecuting attorney, and there's a new judgeship. So I'm hoping that you can come. It's from 6:00 to 8:00, I believe, at the library. And on a little bit more somber note, two years ago this month, there was a medical emergency at Oval Beach. A man had to run up to either the gatehouse or the beach house to get a landline to summon The victim was a childhood friend of mine. She later had to be taken off a ventilator at Holland Hospital. It's, what's the problem that we can't get cell service there? Anybody have any ideas? It's scary. And we're very fortunate that her son did not sue. He's a corporate attorney, and obviously, we were all upset. So I'm hoping there was talk about cell service there. What's happened?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Anyone else in the audience?
I just feel like I needed to step back up and, oh, sorry, yep, Greg Hour, 548 Hoffman Street. I just wanted to get up again and, Holly, I'll put my data, because it's non-bias, up against you any single day of the week. This is what I do for a living. I analyze data for Fortune 100 brands every single day. I don't phone a friend, and the data doesn't lie, and my model doesn't lie. I hope you've all made the right decision, because a 12% reduction is 48,000 people. Forty-eight thousand from the 400,000 people that come here annually. The data that is shown through Experian, the best data source in the world, shows people spend $500 a day on entertainment, gas, restaurants, lodging, no, lodging's not included in that. Do the math. Forty-eight thousand times 500, that is the number you're looking to reduce to get it down to. Any day of the week, if you want my data to go against yours, I have access to it, and I want to also say I have abilities in data to tell you exactly how many people stay in a short-term rental and go and visit any one of the businesses that you own. I have that ability to capture that data. Not only that, I can tell you how many people live in their house, where they live, what their household income is. It's all white hat data, and I have access to it all. Maybe I should have came in when I proposed helping you months ago and said, maybe I should, maybe I should charge you $100,000 for it, because then maybe you would have taken it serious, because I don't think you took any of my information serious. You have not advanced the town today, I'm sorry to say. You have left no room for future growth. And again, you talked about greed, you talked about all those things. Awesome. You've just now made it now more expensive to rent my STR, because if people want to stay here, I'm going to be able to charge whatever I want. So you've made it about greed now. I never did. I made it about data. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
841 Holland Street, 7 Noiki. Nothing personal, I don't know any of you at all, but I don't think what you just did solved any of the issues. I don't think you're going to bring any of the families back to town. What you're going to do, you're going to create even a most of a ghost town, because who is going to buy? It will be second homeowner people. They won't be families living here full-time. That's my point. And also, I know Council Dean mentioned something about trust, and I think for people to have the trust, they have to have the council to open, to be open to them. And I think what happened in the past with the ex-city council, city manager, that we still don't know what happened to him, why he either quit, was fired, but at the same time got paid, that meeting was shielded from us. We don't know, we can only speculate. So if you want our trust, be honest with us. We are not kids. We paid for his salary that you paid. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stanton.
Anyone else in the audience?
Thanks for doing that. Keith Cherick, resident, no short-term rentals, 560 Main Street. All right, so I just want to be quick. I did this, not an environmental impact study, but a residential quality of life impact study. So on my three blocks where I live, there's 19 homes. There are six STRs, five second homes. What's left is eight residential homes with 10 people. There are two people under 60, six under 70, and two over 80. The neighborhood has been hollowed out, and it, you know, it's basically no one lives there. You know, so if someone dies, no one's going to know it, not even a short-term rental owner. But that's not the point, but it's been hollowed out. No one lives on the hill. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Anyone else in town?
Joe Leonati, 712 Aligan. This wasn't something I was prepared to talk on, but I think some of you ought to take a look in the mirror. I found it interesting, and I know how long that I heard Mr. Gardner talk about an ethics, revising the ethics program, and I felt that way too, and this, we were talking about this back in April, it's now July, it was, yeah, it was going to be on the agenda, I haven't heard anything about it. But it's just interesting how you were able to dig up an ethics proposal and question some of the members on the council if they were doing wrong. I can remember when you had someone who was slapped twice by the state for breaking election laws. Didn't bother anybody, keep them on the council. Maybe it's time you got to look at where your motivations are.
Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Go ahead.
Bobby Gott, 341 Main Street. Thank you very much for your service. And also, now that I have minutes, I just want to say that I support Glenna and Kelly and Marcia in terms of their position on the airport property, not only as a citizen but also as the chair of the Coastal Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Diana Decker, 128C Elizabeth. I trust all of you. I think you're all wonderful. You did, it's a lot of work being elected official. I've been there, done that, and I'm happy that Ryan, he was the right person for the job, the city manager, and I'm hoping that the clerk gets a pay raise. Well, it's serious, because we lost a good clerk. Okay, we lost a good clerk, very good clerk, went to somewhere else. We lost a great treasure. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? We'll move to online if no one else wishes to speak in person. Anyone else? If you can state your name and where you live, Liz.
Hi, Liz Amundson, and 229 Francis Street. Like to thank everybody today for their service. You know, we don't have a crystal ball, so not one of us really knows what's going to happen because of the decision that was made today. And I just kind of wanted a few statements. You know, I've been a property owner and have a short-term rental now for almost 20 years in Sagatuck. When my husband and I purchased our property, storefronts were empty, and many of the homes were dilapidated, including ours, which was up on blocks. The house across the street on Butler, some of you may be familiar with it, it's beautiful now, but it had broken windows and a hose going to the second floor. They use that as their water source. So just a lot of development, and that's been outside investment. It's helped our town. Our town is beautiful. I keep hearing the words density and community, and we're losing our community. I think we need to keep in mind that a community is just not made up of full-time residents. As a property owner, I spend more than half of the year in Sagatuck. I'm not a resident, but I very much feel part of a community. So I do take offense when it's projected that non-residents, or non-resident property owners, don't create community, because we do. We're here, we care, I care. I think the premise that the city's nuances are due to short-term rentals is false. The trash, the noise, the fireworks are all things that all communities experience. This is not solely due to short-term rentals. I experienced those same issues where I live now. I just had a drug raid next to me, you know, undercover officers, and I live in a nice part of the town where I am a permanent resident. It can happen anywhere. These things are not unique to just short-term rentals or tourist communities. There's been much discussion about freeing up homes for families. I don't believe that'll happen with the caps. My son is 37 years old, he's looking for a home in Michigan. He can afford Sagatuck, but it's not on his list. We simply don't have the amenities that a larger community can offer him and his family. I believe homes freed up by cap limits will slowly be replaced as second homes. What comes to mind is this, the second home that was a few doors down for me, that was only used during the month of July every year until it sold a couple of years ago. That was it, one month out of the year. It sat, it sat vacant the rest of the time. No additional revenue coming into our city throughout the rest of the year, throughout the rest of the year, excuse me. Now picture all those homes that are going to go, probably second homes, more than likely, probably not family homes, and that's been attested to by some of the realtors there. That's lost revenue for all of our small businesses, restaurants, shops, whatever they may be. If I really wanted to be selfish about it, I can kind of reiterate what the man just said before. More business for me, but I don't think, I don't think it's going to help our community overall. So again, thank you for your time. We don't have a crystal ball. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Anyone else with their hand raised online? You see anyone, Jamie? All right. Well, there are correspondence in the packet, obviously, everyone has read through those. Onto council comments. Who would like to go first, Logan or Holly?
Appreciate the comments from the community tonight. I think they made themselves heard.
Okay, Gregory.
I just want to address something that's really, really pressing. A lot of people have been talking about this week, and that was, there was no bubbles at Music in the Park last week. That was, that was because we had run out of bubble juice. And so I, I know that that was probably the most important thing, that everybody was on edge tonight, but I will be blowing bubbles at Music in the Park this Wednesday, 7 to 9. We've got Nate Holly, one of our favorite locals, you know, Birdie's husband, he'll be there playing at Music in the Park, so come join us.
Hey, Scott.
You know, city government's a marathon, not a sprint, so thank you to staff for staying late tonight, even though we started at 6:30. Thank you to the rest of the council for your deliberations, and mostly, thank you to you folks that dialed in, and particularly all the folks that came here in person to speak their mind in a civil and democratic manner. It continues to reinforce my faith in our great country. Thank you.
Ellen?
I actually like to echo exactly those thoughts. I appreciate the respectful discourse that we had tonight. Not easy, it's not easy sitting in this chair, and I know that these are hard decisions for all of us. Thoughtful consideration, I believe, and trust is given by all, even with those with whom I disagree. Like to keep forward to have respectful, decent conversations and be mindful of the fact that on the other side of the keyboard, and that sits a real human being, to be aware of that. Appreciate everybody else. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, and I remain humbled to serve the citizens of the city of Sagatuck. That includes the people that have voted for me as well as the people that live and work here. Everybody's important to me as a citizen of this community, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve and hope I will continue to do so for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, I want to give a shout out to the CBB in April for 4th of July. It was great, and it shows how this city does come together, and, you know, we all love Sagatuck. I also want to, I mean, and everybody who showed up online and who has been part of this process since we began the discussions well over a year ago. Shout out to Logan, Gregory, Scott, Ryan, Lauren, Helen, Russ, and Jamie, and the rest of our staff. I really am proud to be part of this team, and we don't always agree, but I think, I know we all have the best interests of the city, so thank you, and yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just echo some of those comments in, in just that, wow, I haven't eaten, and so I'm losing my train of thought. I realize we're, you know, this is a very tough issue, and I just appreciate everybody who wanted to sit down with me and have, you know, really great conversations. We went back and forth on a lot of things in a very respectful way, and I appreciate everyone who took the time to do that, so. With that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes.